We are recording.
All right. We got it. All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Huffington School Board meeting for, what they say, today is Thursday, September the 10th. Sorry, I lost track of time. I can't believe it's September 10th already. And we have a full board with us this evening. Norm Gupel, Rob NATO, Seth A. Frame, Andrea Folsom, and Jim O'Brien. And then we're joined this evening by a great cast of characters. We have Steve Chamberlain, Superintendent Michelle Clark, Rebecca Gagnon, Bill Carosa, Mandy Hibbard, Amy Doyle, and Chris Kelly. Thank you all for joining us this evening. So we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I know Steve has flags up, which is great.
Flags, yeah.
Are they up there? They're there. Yes. Thanks, Steve. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we are meeting again remotely, as has been our custom now since March. And we're able to do that because the governor issued an emergency declaration because of COVID-19 and a series of emergency orders, one of which allows public bodies such as the Huffington School Board to conduct our business fully remotely. So there is no physical location for this meeting tonight. We're doing it all virtually over the, over the web. And so that, that change for the governor's executive order is the only change, I believe is the only change to 91A, which is the statute that governs how meetings, public meetings are conducted here in town. And so all the other aspects of our RSE 91A are being followed. And that includes taking minutes. And, and then we also will allow public participation through this process. So there's two opportunities for public participation tonight. And we'll get to instructions for how to do that when we get to that point. Mr. Chamberlain, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No, I think we're gonna, we have some special guests coming up. I will just slide those in. Yep. Besides that, we are, the agenda is fine as it stands.
Thanks. And any correspondence?
There were just a couple of this meeting. They were in the correspondence folder.
And then we don't have any minutes to approve. This is a, I guess it's not, we're not on our regular schedule, although we've been meeting every week. And so it will have the minutes available next week to approve, but those are available if anybody per RSE 91A that we just talked about, and those minutes are available upon request, but we'll vote on them at next meeting. And so we have gotten to our first public comment period. And so if there's any attendees who wish to provide public comment to the board, if you just move your mouse or cursor down to the bottom of your screen, there should be a raise your hand feature. And if you click on that, that will let us know that you wish to provide comments. And so the first hand that was just raised was Bonnie Christie. Hi Bonnie, thanks for joining. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Jim, thanks. I just wanted to put a bug in your ear about getting back to the discussion that we started a year or more ago about reducing waste and particularly single-use plastics in schools. And my understanding is that Norm and you, Jim, are going to be speaking with us in a subcommittee or a smaller group with the, the Hawken 100, whatever, energy group. So hopefully we can set a date for that. We actually made a lot of progress. Steve led us through several sessions before we got hit by COVID and that derailed us, but we had talked about getting bulk milk delivery from Kentucky Creamery. We had looked into what the health regulations are around using real silverware instead of disposables. We had looked into some of the cost benefits, cost analysis of switching from single use. So we had, we had actually covered a lot of territory. And I think that Amy Roth is actually in the process of doing something with composting. Haven't spoken with her for a while. So just hoping that we can get back to that. Now the budget is over and the school meeting is over and the primary is over. Not that you have a lot of extra time, but yeah, so looking forward to, to working with you guys on that.
Yeah, thanks Bonnie. And it's funny, I was just thinking about this the other day. And you're right, when the Students for 100 came, I think we wanted to continue working on that and thought that your committee was, was a really good place to start. So yeah, we will, I think we were waiting for all those things that you just mentioned getting resolved. And then also for school to be kind of get back in the swing and to kind of bring the group together. So we will work on that. And maybe I'll reach out to you independently and see if we can find some dates that work and, and then circulate that among the group to find one sooner than later.
Great. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks Bonnie. So at this time, I don't see any other hands raised. There is a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. And so at this point, I am going to and then close public comment and then move on to comments from the Huffington Select Board. I think I was gonna call on Andrea to go first. Why don't you kick us off tonight?
I will, though I will note that we are not the Huffington Select Board.
Oh, did I say that? So I apologize. Oh man, I think that might be the first time I screwed up and I'm, I apologize.
Oh, that's nice. Well, thank you. Um, so yeah, I just, you know, sometimes it feels like kind of in, in life, you know, we just need to take a collective breath and step back. And I was thinking today as the school year approaches, and I know and I can feel the anxiety and excitement building both on the board and in our community and with our kids and our teachers. Now seems like a really good time for us all to take a step back and take a breath collectively. You know, this has been an unprecedented year and we've said it before, but sometimes I think it's weirdly easy for us to forget that we're in the middle of a pandemic. You know, especially in New Hampshire, where we have not necessarily been impacted yet as much as other places in the country. And I know that when this board transitioned on, one of the first things we, we did, as we all remember, was quickly transition to remote learning. You know, it was a really sudden and forced reimagining of learning and teaching, and it happened for all of us. That was seven months ago, and yet here we are today. You know, we have a soft opening that kicked off today with pre-K and kindergarten, went in fourth, seventh, and ninth. You know, we had half of those hybrid kids in the building today. We have half coming back tomorrow. So excited to see their, their teachers and their friends, even though it looks really different than how we left it. You know, we've got our hybrid and remote kiddos doing in-person assessments in the schools or outside under tents so that we can hit the ground running. And then we have our school day officially set to start finally on Monday, the 14th. And I know, I can just feel the vibrations. I can feel it every year, but this year more than, than any other. I can tell that we're really, again, that, that mixture of excitement and anxiety is piercing. You know, and I just wanted to give a little perspective, because when we have these meetings, week after week, it can be hard to lose perspective, I think. You know, we, when we transitioned, we also had to postpone our school district meeting, which meant postponing our budget process. And so over the course of six months, it took us six months, we had to grapple with our new economic and social reality. And we had three drive-through voting sessions. I know we have tried to repress them in our memories, but they happened. We had countless meetings and information sessions and public comment. And we went through nine different options for a school budget before we landed on one. And that was only in late August. You know, it's, again, it's hard to remember that it really wasn't that long ago. It was less than a month ago. We actually got a budget. And I, I truly still believe that that process was necessary. But the other reality is, as well, other school districts were able to get a move on. They had the bandwidth and they had the budget to get a move on into their reopening plan. We just didn't have that luxury. And it's not an abdication of responsibility. It's a fact. We did not know what our budget was going to look like. And so we didn't know how we were going to be able to reopen in a safe and effective manner. And you know, I, I think that's to say that if it feels like we've been hustling to get things done, it's because we have, we all have. And you know, I know that this isn't ideal or even close to perfect. And I know that it's super frustrating and overwhelming. I certainly feel that as well. But it's also easy for us to look at other districts and forget all of the things that we were going through. And to see their highlight reel without also seeing the nuance of the community conversations that are happening. We've also been working, the school board and teachers' union have been in negotiations since July. So we can work collectively towards an agreement that supports all parties involved. You know, we are happy to take part of this process since, of course, as a school board, we want our buildings to be safe for our children and our teachers and our staff. And, and we were able to get that MOA completed and ratified. And, and then we're continuing to address concerns that, that have arisen. And we'll continue to do that, you know, moving forward. Since that's what we do at the beginning and throughout every single school year, it's never perfect and never ideal, but we're always working, I would say, in a good faith effort to, to react and respond and problem solve as quickly as possible. So I guess the last things I was thinking about is, you know, school reopening, it's not something that strictly belongs to one entity. It doesn't just belong to the school board. It's a collaboration. You know, it's between the school board and families, community, our administration, our teachers, our staff, and our unions. And as such, it's an inherently complex process. And so what might seem super obvious from one perspective, I guarantee is anything but from another. So my, what I would ask of, of everyone is moving forward tonight and in the coming weeks, that we just maintain perspective, that we take a breath, that we remain solutions focused. Because we will find exactly what we are looking for. So if we look for solutions, we will find them. And that we react with accountability instead of blame, you know, which rarely enhances our understanding of a situation and often hampers, I would say, an effective problem solving. You know, we hear everyone listening and me speaking, you know, we have a collective and a shared goal of educating our children and keeping our community safe, but we can only do that together. So those were sort of big top of mind things that I really hope that we can hold on to as we move forward, not just tonight, but in the coming days and weeks as well. So thanks.
Thanks Andrea. That was, that was good. Appreciate it. Norm, you're off mute. I don't know if that was on purpose, because you wanted to go next, but why don't you go next?
I, I just, I had to unmute myself because Andrea, I just want to say thank you for, thank you for the words you said. I stand by those words and I just want to say thank you for that. I just want to say it was really great to see all you guys in person today. It really was. You know, it was great to be able to be with the four of you, with Steve and get a tour of the high school. You know, a lot of work has gone into that project, you know, that we've all started, started with as a board. And I'm just seeing Steve share each location with excitement in his eyes. It's just a great feeling as a board member to see that things are coming into fruition. And for me, it set a reality in for me. I was really like, well, this is great. We're doing a great job with what we were, what we were to do with this bond and that the schools are going to continue to improve. And that was sometimes really great to see. And we still have a lot of work to do, but I just wanted to say thank you for, to Steve for taking time out of his day to give a tour of the high school. Looks great. And he gets very excited about the bathrooms. I will say that. He loves the bathrooms, but um, the carpets look great. So I just want to say thank you for you all coming. A couple of things, I just wanted to say that I went to, I went to Harold Martin yesterday and I went there today. And I went there yesterday with my daughter. And my daughter was just absolutely just excited to be back. She was very excited to see her teacher. She was excited to see some of her friends. And for me as a parent, it was a reality check to see how, how much she missed her, her friend. Because you know, as a parent, you know, I want what's best for my kids. As a school board, I want what's best for our kids, our teachers, and the community. Because that's what we're elected to do. But I paused for a minute and, and saw the excitement in her eyes and her smile underneath her mask. And it was just everything that this board has done, everything that our teachers have done with Steve, Michelle. To see that moment meant a lot to me. It meant a lot because it was a smile of gratitude for all the hard work this board has done, this community has done, our teachers have done, to get them going, to get them started, to be able to see their friends, to get an education, but also to be safe. We're not going to make everybody happy. I've learned that in this position that not everyone's going to be happy with the choices we make. But in the end, we have to find a compromise and try to be civil. Respect one another and realize at the end of the day, we may not always agree, but we can always be respectful. So for me, for me as a parent, it was a great experience to see from my, my daughter. I look forward to my son having an opportunity tomorrow to go to Maple and having the same experience. But when my daughter said Joan, she just lit up and she said, I like her dad. I like her a lot. She's going to be great. And it just made me smile. And then today I went back to Harold Martin just to walk around and see the facility project because I may not be able to see it tomorrow because I gotta be at Maple Street. And it was great seeing some of our teachers, you know, saying hi and being really happy and supportive and seeing some of the students coming out. You know, they're, they're really excited. Everyone was practicing social distancing. So I, I thank everyone here who made it possible for our kids to get back into school, for Steve, to this board, Michelle, everyone from that makes this happen, that it happened. I want to, I want to thank them. And I wish everyone a successful start next week. And like Andrea said, let's focus on taking it one step at a time and get through this. Thank you.
Thanks, Norm. Seth or Rob?
I can go. I will. So I too went on the tour today of the high school, which was interesting. It was the first time I had been in the building, not as a parent going to an event or teaching in a class. It was the first time I ever just went and looked around the building. And I learned two things. First of all, a lot of great things have gone on. And there are lots of parts of the building look great, but it also reminded me, we do in the long term, have to keep focused on the facilities. There are issues that I saw. There are rugs that are buckling. There are floors. There are ceiling spots that are, you know, yellow. There are things that, you know, there are classrooms that need better, you know, that need to be maybe reconfigured. There's all sorts of things. We can't do them all at once. I understand the cost limitation, but it did remind me how important that piece of it is because I don't think about it enough. I know I think mostly about the teachers and the, you know, what are the books like, what are the, what are the computers like? And that's all important, but it is also important that the facility is strong. And we do long-term have to consider that. I know we're doing that, but it just drove home to me something. I don't, I made me realize I don't think about that as much as I should. And as to reopening, I'll say this, I am, I am a federal prosecutor. I deal with contentious issues every day. That's the nature of my work. And I have never dealt with anything in that realm as difficult as school reopening. It is an impossible task to figure out how to do this in a way that meets everyone's needs. I guess this shouldn't have been surprising, but I guess in some ways it was when Mr. Chamberlain came forward with a remote plan. There were a lot of people who responded, we don't like that plan. We want an in-school plan. When we had an in-school plan, we heard a lot of people who wanted a remote plan. When we said sports, there were a lot of people who said no sports. When we said masks, there are people who said, why masks? These are all legitimate positions. And we have tried to thread the needle. I am sure we have not done it perfectly. We, you know, I've talked to parents in other towns who are going through, you know, growing pains as they have opened schools. And I'm sure we're going to go through them. And from wherever you sit and wherever you think, and a lot of the responses that I give back to people have emailed me is that I appreciate your position and you need to understand that I've gotten 14 emails from people with the exact opposite position. So just as you think about this and as you're unhappy with something, just remember how difficult this problem is for everyone. That's, that's no excuse, but that's just the reality. And Andrea is right. We will continue to work on it. We will continue to not get it perfect because frankly, there is no perfect answer.
Thanks Seth. Rob?
Jim, I don't have any new ground to plow, so I will pass it along to you.
I don't know that I have any new ground to plow, but I do, like Norm, I just, I kind of feel like I want to share at least my experience today. So I have, I have a nine-year-old who is going to be, well, is in fourth grade. She's not even going to be. She now is. And so you know, I think there was a lot of anxiety with her parents about, you know, the trip back to school. And for sure, she was feeling anxious as well. But you know, she, she walked her way up to Maple Street School today for her couple hours to meet her teacher and her class. And when she came back, you know, I asked her how her day went and she was with a friend and both of them had big smiles. And they both said together, it was amazing. I asked them what they did and, you know, they got to meet their teachers. They got told how to stay safe. They got to go outside and they had a mask break. And you know, the next thing she said is, I can't wait to go back on Tuesday. I can't wait to be back in, in the classroom. And so I only say that because you know, I know how hard it's been for our administrators, for our teachers, how much chaos there's been, how much anxiety there is. How, you know, just how much work has gone into preparing ourselves for the soft opening of these last couple of days and then next week. You know, but from my daughter's experience, she didn't see any of that. What she had was an amazing day. And so that's really special. And I think it's great that we are able as the adults to, to make all this happen. So our, our students are entering school in a way that they can come home saying, it was amazing, even though they have masks on. They're staying separate from their friends. There are six-foot separations. It's, it's an odd environment, but you know, the care that I think the teachers are showing to our students is pretty amazing. So I just wanted to share that and to thank everybody as, as Norm and others have done for, you know, for really making these experiences happen because they are meaningful. And I can attest to it because I had two young ladies tell me how meaningful it was to them. So thank you. All right. So we're going back to the agenda. We do not have any presentations or staff reports this evening. And as Steve had mentioned, we do have an addition to the agenda. And so we, we received a request this morning for representatives of the Support Association Hess as well as the HEA to join us for, for a few moments. And so I'm going to ask, I don't know if Steve can see them, but there we go. Both Scott and Nancy have raised their hands. So this should be easy to find. Happy to be joined by our, our association representatives. And I see Scott. There he is. Hey Scott. And Nancy is still muted, but Nancy should be able to unmute yourself and turn your video on if you wish. You don't have to.
I thought I just did. Oh, yeah, here we go. We're good.
Now we can see you. Well, thanks for joining. I guess I will, I will turn it over to you guys. I appreciate you guys joining us.
Okay. Um, so I'm going to go first. So we, Scott and I with, met with our members yesterday and discussed a lot of things and concerns and things people were worried about. And so we just put together a statement, which I believe you guys all saw, or at least you did, Jim, today. So I'm just going to read the statement and then Scott and I can answer questions and have a conversation about this. So I'm just going to read from what we said today. So we are here today as leaders of HEA to represent the teachers and Hess to represent instructional support staff, office staff, library assistants, and kitchen staff. We have been working with the administration and the board since July through multiple changes of, changes of plans and schedules to assure that when we return to in-person instruction, the entire school community is protected as much as is possible for a school opening in a pandemic. Everyone involved with process, including dozens of staff members, our administrators, members of the school board, has put in long hours with good intentions, trying to meet all of the proposed health and safety measures prior to the first day of school. Nonetheless, there remain some serious issues in our schools that need to be resolved before the HEA and Hess believes that it is truly safe to welcome employees and students back into our buildings. So in the spirit of good faith, we are in the process of filing a grievance based on the recently signed health and safety memorandum between the associations and the school board. Based on the strong relationship we've had working this summer, we fully expect that the school board and district administrators will work with us diligently to resolve this grievance quickly, given the urgency of the matter. Apart from the grievance, we have some other matters that weren't, aren't addressed in the MOA, but we have additional concern based on some observations over the past two days as we've started to welcome limited students into the building. And this is taken from all three buildings. So our concerns involve three areas. One, there are some vacant staff positions that have not been filled and some new staffing needs that have come up. And we feel it makes it difficult to achieve the outcomes that were set forth in the plans. Two, unclear or frequently changing assignments and schedules for staff. And that creates a lot of confusion. And when you are trying to open the building, keep things running smoothly, it's kind of hard to deal with all the changes. And then number three, insufficient or unclear plans for in-school daily procedures. So while the above issues are not necessarily health and safety conditions, but rather management prerogatives, we do hope that they will be addressed quickly as additional staffing clarity with regards to plans and assignments will help to ensure a safer environment for employees and students. And we, we request urgent attention to our grievance and our list of other concerns so that they can be addressed before we welcome more students back into the school. HEA and Hess members are ready and willing to help the district solve these problems quickly if possible. We hope that the school board and administration will work diligently while also considering all eligible options to safeguard our processes. We're happy to give more explanations or answer questions.
Thank you Nancy. And we did, I did circulate a little after five, I did circulate the letter. So all the board members did receive it. So appreciate the letter and the comments. And I guess at this point, the, open it up to any, any board members have questions, comments, concerns that they wish, they wish to share.
Jim, what is the, what is the process for a grievance normally done?
Sure.
Because I'm not familiar with being done in a public setting like this.
Well, so I'll, I'll explain. And then I think Steve, Nancy, or Scott can correct me if I catch something wrong. But you know, outlined in the, the collective bargaining agreement, you know, there's a, there's a process for grievances, which which is really, it's, 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 it's designed so that there's a violation or, you know, if there's a violation of the, of the CBA or there's a misinterpretation or that the, either a teacher is a group of teachers or the associations can, can, I guess, grieve them, to use the term, which then starts a process. And that process is really designed to to try to relieve those problems at the lowest administrative level. So, so it starts, you know, I hate to say with a form, but it's a process. It starts with a form in which, in which is the grievances are laid out. It then, you know, there's timelines built in that I won't get right. So I won't even try. But then it, you know, goes to the, to the building principal or supervisor level to try to resolve the issues. If that isn't met satisfactory, then it would go to the, I think it would go then to the superintendent to work through. And again, you know, with all attempts to get to solutions, this is a solution-oriented process. It's, it's, you know, we're really trying to meet where we can, what, what those issues are and resolve them as we go. If, if the grievance isn't resolved at the superintendent, then it comes to the board. So we have a role to play in this process. You know, the board is, it's not really an appeals because that's not quite the right word, but we, you know, the, the issue would come before this board for a discussion to try to resolve. And then if it doesn't get resolved at the board level, then it goes to arbitration. And by the, the CBA, you know, the specifics of the conversations, of the resolutions between all those parties is done in non-public. So the, the non-public conversations and non-public resolutions in order to try to get to the matter. And this covers, you know, all aspects of the CBA. And so it's not just, it's not just one issue. It's not just personnel. It's, it's issues that arise in the CBA. And so the memorandum of agreement that we finalized or ratified a couple of weeks ago is part of the, is part of the, is now part of the collective bargaining agreement. And so that would be, that's the process I think that Nancy spoke to that. So that it sounds like the associations will, will put forward that. And then, you know, I think we, as we have been doing, I think we'll continue to, you know, kind of work to resolve those through that, through that process. I hope, I hope I got all that right.
Yeah, so we're not trying to litigate that process here, for sure.
Yeah.
Right. That, the thought is hopefully to solve all of it before we have to go to court, right?
Yeah.
I guess, my only question is, is it, is it common that it goes to the board like this to have it resolved before going through, let's say, our superintendent and stuff?
Yeah, so we then, we, I think Nancy and Scott and the associations are going to do the grievance procedure. So they're following that. That's, that's not the purpose of the meeting tonight, so that.
Okay.
Yeah. So they're just letting us know that they're going to do that and the hope that we can resolve all that through the, you know, through the proper channel. So it's not starting here, it's going to start as the process would normally start.
Okay. I just wanted to say how it all works out, guys. I appreciate you answering the question. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Got it, Nancy. I just have a quick, I mean, I used to wear that grievance rep hat, so I kind of know the process. And the thing that catches my ear is the timeline piece. So I would assume that's a large part of, you know, the statement is that, that we can accelerate that timeline is, would that be, would that be a fair statement?
Scott, we did send like an informal list of the, the things on the great, didn't we, Scott? You sent that today?
We have it developed. It's not a, it's not in the exact correct format yet.
Right.
We need to fill out the right forms and get them to the right people. But certainly the, you know, if, if there are concerns in that grievance that, you know, going the 10 days and then 15 days and going the full time limit, it might lose some of its immediacy and the, and it might be more important than letting it go for 10 or 15 days at a time. Absolutely.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, and I, and I, I mean, I, my hope is, my, I guess, I won't say expectation because that may not be the right word. But, I mean, I, I know that we've been working together to try to resolve those issues as they come up. And then we had a meeting yesterday, let's say the evening, and in real time, I think Steve was working to resolve some of the issues. So I, you know, my hope is that, you know, we're not going to wait. If you, if you read the CBA, there are all these timelines, 10 days. And my hope is that it doesn't, you know, that we're not, we're not working at, towards the clock in the CBA, that we're working to, you know, work together to resolve these issues as we can and get them all put to bed, as, you know, as best that we're able to in a, in a timely fashion.
Just so I understand, what was your goal today was to essentially put us, make us understand that this process is happening at the administrative level? Is that, was that your objective? I'm just trying to understand.
I think it's, it's, there's two things because the great, there's the grievance and then there's the other areas that we have concerns about. So we just wanted to look, let you know. And I think Scott and Jim talked earlier about the grievance. And then these other matters that we have listed aren't part of that health and safety agreement. So there's something else that we wanted to bring to your attention.
And has there been, from your perspective, a breakdown in communications about working out the things that are concerning to you?
Breakdown, Seth. I think that, that we have concerns about, about how the, the buildings are opening and that kind of thing. I, as we said in that, you know, in this statement, I think that everybody's working incredibly hard and, and with good intentions. So I don't, I don't want to call it a breakdown because that sounds like somebody's doing something wrong and it's broken, but um.
Well, could I give a few details?
I think there are still groups of, large groups of teachers that are, that are worried about the opening not going as smoothly as it should have or could have.
And how is that being worked out? Sort of, you know, I'm not in the schools on a daily basis. So how is that right now or today being sort of trying to be resolved?
I mean, do you think it would be helpful if I gave some more details on those three categories I mentioned? Because I just kind of went through them because that might help you understand what we're talking about. I mean, and I'm not necessarily going to go in order because I think with number three where I said insufficient or unclear plans for in-school daily procedures. And we get, there's so many questions people have constantly about what do we do about this? What do we do about that? What's the procedure for that? Like honestly, what I think we need, I've seen other districts have these written 30, 40-page plans. Where it's, so, because the questions come to me and they come to Scott, you know, what's the situation when this happens with a student and there's not a mask or this happens in the clean? And I think they don't have a resource to go to. If things were in writing, then it would create, it would kind of calm down some of that anxiety. People's like, "Well, I don't know what to do about this situation. I don't know." So I have looked and other districts do have some pretty detailed plans. I know that's a process that takes a while, but I think that would be a big help for people day to day.
Yeah, that's helpful.
And then the one about staffing, that's kind of specific, well, more to the support staff, so I can talk about that. We, I've been working with Bill and I've been in touch with him, but I feel like the staff is stretched really thin, the support staff at Harold Martin. I feel like there is, there's not enough flexibility, there's not enough backup. They don't, I don't think you have a permanent sub, so people have been, and I think we've solved this, but potentially working in four different classrooms and both cohorts of the group, which in my mind removes the benefit of the cohorts if you have an adult moving back and forth. I have talked to Bill and this is getting worked out, but there's no, if someone's sick, if someone's out, there's not enough, there's just not enough people. And at our school, we have to, the new thing that's come up is the coverage for the remote teachers. So every time a remote teacher is teaching a classroom with kids in it, there has to be another adult in that room. So we have six, maybe seven, teachers teaching remotely. That creates a lot of need in those classrooms. And we don't have a permanent sub. There's not a lot of subs available. So what I worry about happening is that there's all that coverage and certain people are going to get stretched way too thin. They're going to be all around the building in different classrooms, class after class. And I think, again, that defeats some of that, the idea of keeping groups separate and trying to keep the exposure down. So I feel like staff is needed at both those buildings. I haven't heard anything from Maple Street.
I guess my question is, is, you know, the timeline, you know, our kids are going back next week.
Yep.
Yeah. And I want, you know, I want to, I want to be really, really clear about that. You know, I, I want our teachers safe, I want our students safe and everything. I just want to, I want to be clear, our kids are going back next week. And I really hope that we can bridge this together, whatever this issue is, but.
Yeah, well, this isn't new. I mean, we've, you know, we've been talking about some of this stuff for a long time. So, yeah, we, that's what we want too. And we don't, you know, we know it's going to be tough. We're going to need a lot of subs. People, someone was out today because they had a symptom, filled out the form, they had to stay home. They're probably fine, but the form requires you to stay home if you have a sore throat or something. That's going to happen more and more. And I just don't think we have the depth of staff to deal with it.
So basically, from what I understand is, work through this, we're going to still continue with our plan moving forward. The two, the two you guys are working on, correct? And we're still moving forward with the plan that we put forth, trying to get through what you guys are trying to have addressed. Does that make sense? So we're going to continue, Monday, Monday.
Oh, we're not, we're not, we're just saying that this is going to be a problem and we're concerned that staff are going to be put at risk by being asked to do too, too much. And we're just going to break down because there aren't enough subs. I, you know, that's something that has been discussed. I've listened to all these meetings, that, this situation itself. I feel like there are a few community volunteers. I don't know if they've stepped up, but, but that's, you know, so that's what that, that issue is.
Yeah, thank you. It has, you know, you're right. It has been something we've been talking about. How, how, how we deal with it. And I know that Steve and his team's been working on it, trying to resolve it. So it is, it is a real issue. Any other questions, comments, Rob?
Well, I just think that, you know, to Nancy's point, as we go through the updates, then we can follow up with each principal about where they're at with subs and particular areas in their buildings that are going to be a challenge. You know, we said when we started this process that we need to be mindful of everybody's concerns. And I think this is just, you know, identifying those and seeing if we can fill the gap. And if we can't fill the gap, then, yeah, we need to think about how we're doing it. So thank you for, you know, highlighting the issues for us.
So I, this may be, well, this sort of, well, I shouldn't, I won't actually bring it up. So we, we, we do get, you know, Steve does keep us up to date, I guess is probably the right term, probably every day. But I think I'm lucky enough to talk to Steve every day, but maybe not all of us. But we do get reports, you know, how things are going. And so I, I think on the, you know, the, the work on the MOA, I just, I just, I just hope, you know, Steve can continue to provide, you know, sort of where we're at, especially in some of the challenging issues that we're, you know, we're working through and resolving them. So that is something that Steve does. And so it's more of just like a statement that our hope is that we continue that communication and and work through these issues, you know, in a very timely manner. Because again, I don't think any of us want these things to be hanging out there for, you know, the weeks that are part of the CBA. I think we want to work through them. So that was more of a statement than anything else. But thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And is there anything else that you want to, you want to, you want to mention to us before we go?
Hold on. Let me see.
So from my, from the teacher's perspective, I think that, you know, Nancy read the statement and it, we worked on it together and it, and it spoke well for both groups. It's just a general statement that, yeah, there might be a process coming up and we're working together on the process to get those things fixed. But teachers have real concerns and, and we were, as everybody spoke about, even when it was just freshmen and seventh graders, half the freshmen, half the seventh graders in the building today was exciting. And it was, and it was great to see kids in the building and to have kids in our classes. But there's still real concerns that I feel like we need to, as adults, take it on our shoulders, make sure those kids are safe, that, that they're excited to be in the building. But it doesn't mean that the building is, is as safe as we can make it.
Yeah, I agree. And hopefully we can continue, you know, working to find all those, those instances where we can make it safer and then make it safer for everybody. So all right. Well, thank you. Thanks for the, for the letter. And then, you know, I understand, you know, the grievance procedure is, is a process, but my, I guess my hope is that, you know, that, that is, that is a formal part of our agreement, I guess, our working agreements together. And I just hope that, you know, we can, we can resolve the issues, you know, in a time, in a very timely manner, you know, at, at the appropriate level to sort of make everybody feel safe, heard, listened to, and get, get things resolved. So we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night and good luck next week.
Thank you.
Bye, thanks.
Thanks. So next up, under items for board discussion, we have back-to-school planning. So we're going to hear from, I think, our, our building leaders and our principals for how things are going. And so we're going to start with Mr. Carosa.
Okay, thank you all. I liked that Andrew had talked about perspective. That it really is what happens, I think, when kids come into the building. It has been, you know, six months since we've seen any kids, except through, you know, video and screens and, you know, when they wave goodbye in, in June, driving by. So today, we had half our kindergarten kids that were in person, you know, happy, shining faces with masks. Somehow, it, after a while, it didn't seem as strange as I thought.
Oh, I think it's. Okay, so it wasn't me, it was Bill. So why don't, as, as Bill unfreezes himself, maybe we'll go, we'll go to Maple Street and Amy and then, and not go and, I guess that would be chronological order or age order. So Amy, thanks for joining us.
Thank you. I, I think what Bill was, was saying is that it was just wonderful to have kids in the building today. I know that there were kindergartners, but also fourth grade. And I just, I want to thank you, Jim, for sharing Charlotte's experience. And I'm so glad that it was a great day for her. It was wonderful to have kids back in the building. Maple Street has been a very, very busy place this week. And as Scott and Nancy talked about, you know, the, the teachers and the support staff are just working so hard, you know, to be able to reimagine what it looks like to provide instruction in this new model, to be able to set spaces that are safe. I know that, you know, myself included, we're all working through a lot of what-ifs, you know, what do I do if this happens? What about this? And, you know, those are, it's, it's challenging. So I just want to validate, you know, the feelings that folks are having, that this is new and it's hard and it's a challenge. And, you know, we just really do, I think, assuming best intentions and working together to problem solve. You know, I keep, you know, reminding myself, you know, I've never lived through a global pandemic before and I'm just going to keep to try to do the next right thing. And Brené Brown has a quote, and she often says, "I'm not here to be right, I'm here to get it right." And so I just keep reminding myself of that. I don't have to be right, I'm just here to get it right. And it is, it is, I think that when we look back on this part of our professional career, we'll have learned a lot about ourselves as, as teachers and as educators and as individuals, because it's just unprecedented. I, I hope when, you know, we work through the concerns that the teachers have, I can, you know, tell the board and I, you know, I know that Steve knows this. As a building principal, I've never worked more, I've never worked harder, I've never worked longer hours. It's not for a lack of trying for, on anybody's part. It's just, the, this is just a really, it's a difficult time. That's the best way I can say it. But to get back to today, having the fourth, half the fourth grade in, in the building was wonderful. The teachers were, you know, happy to see them. And, you know, I kept reminding people, "I'm smiling under my mask," you know, because it's hard, you know, so much of interaction, especially, especially for someone who's much more introverted like myself, you know, you are looking at more non-verbal cues than say verbal. So I just having to keep reminding myself that they can't see that I'm smiling at them. So I have to, you know, actually say something. So we've had a lot of discussion this week. I have really tried to provide opportunity, opportunities for teachers and staff to really be in their spaces and thinking about their curriculum. They've been collaborating in their PLCs, meeting with students. We also, in addition to the soft opening, each one of the fifth and sixth grade teachers had a meeting with their incoming students. Some met them on a picnic table outside, some went for walks, some did phone calls, some did Zoom. So we're just, again, trying to provide opportunities for folks to connect. We sent out a survey this week. My school counselor sent out a survey to look at the wellbeing of students. And that was really well, well-received. We've had, you know, probably about 120 responses. And that's just great. And so our team is working through that, being able to identify the needs that kids might be presenting with. Along those same lines, you heard me talk previously about our assessment clinic, reading specialists at my school, teacher Smith and Carolyn Neff have organized and a wonderful opportunity for kids to come into the building to complete some of their assessments. And that's going to really help us hit the ground running academically with some of our more needy students. You know, I think I'm looking forward to Monday. We will see Team B on Monday and the rest of Team, that, that other half of fourth grade tomorrow. And so just really looking forward to getting into a routine. I do, like many of you, you know, this really is the new year, not so much January 1st as it is the first day of school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thanks for all your work too. Any questions for Amy?
Am I, I've got a question, but it'll be for all three principals. So maybe I'll just save it to the end.
Okay. That sounds fair.
Amy, I had a quick, quick question. And I just want to confirm Max got his haircut for tomorrow because he wanted to look good for you in Maple Street. But I had a quick question. Before, in the past, for students that were doing a hybrid model, on their off day, were they originally having some interaction with the teacher remotely on their off day? Or was that never on the table? I'm getting some of the buildings mixed up with a kid in every single one.
Yeah. So the home days at Maple Street are really paper pencil tasks. They will come home from their in-person instruction day with some activities and assignments to do. You know, we simply just don't have the devices to loan to families for those that are in the hybrid model. And we don't have the staff to be able to have people teaching the other half of the cohort, as well as the students that are at home. So at Maple Street, it really is, when you are in school, that is in-person instruction and you have the teacher's undivided attention. And when you are home, they will be providing the assignments that they'll do. I, I know that I've fielded a lot of questions this week from parents that really want both. And I, I wish I could offer both. I just, we simply don't have the staff.
And that's what I wanted to make sure that I understood the, the situation. So when they receive their devices, there's still going to be pen and paper? Or are you guys going to change what they're going to be doing? Are they going to go on devices once they receive them, but still be at home like we did last year with the students?
Well, I think that what you will see is a combination of tasks. Once we have the devices and we can deploy them to the, to the families. Once we have the devices and we can deploy them to the, to the families that need them and to the students that need them, I think that there will be offerings in Google Classroom for both online activities, whether it's IXL or looking, watching videos to prepare for a science lab or listening to an online book, videos from teachers that they have recorded and saved so that students could watch them again. I, I have received quite a few emails from families that are happy that we are, are not really on the computer all day, every day. Both of my children go to Concord, and so we've started remote and they're on the computer all day long. And so we have received, you know, some feedback from families that they're, they're actually happy that we're cutting back on the screen time a little bit when students are home. But I do foresee that once we have devices and it is more equitable, that we would offer some digitally based opportunities for learning.
And so, and if you're remote, you have a relationship with the teacher all week, basically. You're, all four days, you'll have interaction with them.
Well, all, all five days. We have two remote teachers, Mrs. Roberts and Mrs. Jenkins, and they have created a great schedule that is, that has synchronous live instruction for fourth, fifth and sixth graders. They also have times that they're providing academic support to students, science and social studies instruction specials happening. The remote students, we have deployed devices to if we needed them because that is their sole way that they're interacting with their teachers. We did have a few remote learners come in this week to complete the assessments, which was wonderful. And the tech team is working on how we can do the Ames Web and the STAR at home. Right now, you have to be on a, on a district device and we just, you know, we, there's just a lot of moving parts to be able to do that, but we, we are certainly working through it. But the remote students will have connection with their teacher and their classmates all week.
Amy, I wish you the best of luck this school season. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amy? Awesome, thank you, Amy. So Bill was with us for a moment, but then he, he disappeared again. So.
He lost, he lost power at one.
Oh no, really?
So I don't know if he's back or the generator didn't hit the router or something, but I'm right. I thought he was back here, I wasn't, I wasn't imagining it, so that's a good thing. But it might be a power outage in Deerfield, New Hampshire.
Well, we'll see if he comes back and if not.
I think he wants me to bump him back up.
Oh, there we go, well. Billy, you with us again?
I am.
Wonderful.
Wow, this is quite a deal. So yeah, I lost, lost power twice. So let's, let's get through this fast. Do you want me to do my?
You're up if you're, if you're able.
Okay, no, I think I am, yeah. So, yeah, power just kind of died. I was just about to start the generator and it came back. So anyway, here we go. So I think I mentioned perspective being really important. And it was great to see kids, you know, real faces, or at least half their faces today. It was a really good half day. No tears, which is unheard of. Of course, we had half the kindergarten kids, but real positive empathetic comments from parents and other teachers are saying this too, that parents are really thankful that all of us teachers, all of you on the screen, we've all worked really hard to make this work. And that's the main thing I've heard from parents lately, so that's been really nice. A really good half day, building community with, with their kids. I could see the, the joy in teachers' faces. It's been six months since we worked with kids and, and that's really what we're all about. Dismissal went really well. As you know, we're doing dismissal very differently at Harold Martin. And it was nice to have, really every single kindergarten kid was picked up by a parent, no surprise. Nobody took the bus today. And it was, it was nice that every car had a sign because I've asked parents to have a sign with their name on it so we can quickly radio the kid, so to the, to the car. So that worked really well. I want to thank, I want to really thank Harold Martin staff for, you know, in addition to their normal teaching responsibilities, a lot of them have really helped me with logistical pieces, everything from trying to find tents to facility problems, to master schedule, to duties, to all the things that, you know, really aren't, aren't done as early as I would have liked. I think we're going to make it, but I couldn't have done it without the staff. So I've been working, I think Amy talked about this, not that I heard much of what Amy said, but, you know, we've been working a lot of logistical things. Emails are taking a long time, but they've been positive. A lot of, a lot of questions from parents that are real specific, that may not have been answered or anything. We've worked, Amy and I really worked together and she did the Omen's work on, on sort of the handbook concept, which I know Nancy talked about earlier. We actually do have something that's pretty intense. I'm going to release probably tonight sort of an abridged handbook with just those specific things that parents really need to know. We'll firm up all those little things with staff, everything from scheduling to duties to procedures for first day to lunch and recess and all that for staff, really by tomorrow. As Amy did mention, I did hear this, staff has been meeting with families and kids all week, which has been really very cool. Let's see, cohorting is, is creating some issues. You know, we're trying exceedingly hard to keep kids in their same cohort, meaning that, you know, second grade, Donahue teammate, you know, her 10 kids or nine kids. To do that, you really have to bring kids in from the very beginning of the day, right into school. They can't do a mass recess anymore like we've always done. You know, we always had that period for about a half an hour where kids went on the playground and then when the bell rang, we lined up, kids came in. We just can't do that to be safe. We do have a plan for each classroom to go out, rather each grade to go out together, their own grade, only one grade, and we have like four different stations of recess. And the cohort stays in that station and then rotates the next day and so on, like, you know, like the equipment, the tar, you know, the basketball hoop, the swings. And then Mr. Sherman, our PE teacher, came up with a sort of a walking path with exercise steps and so on. So that's, that we're working hard on that. And finally, facility has been interesting. It's been difficult, you know, in the middle of COVID, which is enough, right, for all of us. The, the construction project has been wonderful, but that's obviously been difficult, but, but great at the same time. And also, you know, we're, we're going to have to probably move preschool to another room, or at least we're considering that because of ventilation issues and as well as the reading room. The reading room was no surprise, we knew that preschool was a little bit. So, but we're really working well with BPS and, and we talked about it a little bit today. They're helping us out. I know Michelle and Steve have, we all have some ideas on how to deal with that. So we're talking about the last minute, moving some rooms. Storage is an issue for all schools, I'm sure, but thanks to Steve and Michelle, they're moving quickly to, to get a pod. Because, but we, we have a lot of excess stuff because to make six feet work in a classroom, you got to move stuff out, that's the only way to do it. So, you know, it, it's, it's hard, but I'll look back on this as a real success, I think, by next week. But I'll never forget this year, as long as I live, that's for sure. I made it.
Knock on wood. Thanks, Bill. Any questions for Bill?
I just, I just want to wish Bill the same, as I did to Amy. I wish you a successful school, school year. My last year at Harold Martin, but I just wanted to wish you all the best over there.
You look too old to be at Harold Martin.
I know, right? But good luck, good luck, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bill. And then Chris and Rebecca.
Great, thank you, Jim. And I would share a lot of what Bill and Amy have already said in regards to just the excitement of having the students back in today. As you, as you've heard, we had the soft opening. It was great to see kids getting off the, off the school bus and, and being let off by their parents and coming in. It was a little different, you know, seeing the seventh graders for the first time without having the opportunity to do the seventh grade salute that we have normally done. But we had the opportunity to meet with the seventh grade before we sent them off with their teachers to their block one class and review all the expectations that have changed for our new normal in our school. So we spent a good half an hour with them this morning. And I thought the seventh grade staff, they did an exceptional job this morning because it's, it's not easy, we're having to retrain behaviors. And I'm sure this is the same in all three schools with the social distancing, staying to the right in the hallways and keeping the masks on, you know, when they're moving throughout the building. And then in the high school level, again, a great job by those, those teachers who had ninth grade students. We had the opportunity, both Rebecca and I, to walk the building. I think I hit a new record today with close to 18,000 steps in the building today. And I don't know that I've ever done that. So there was a lot of walking around today, but I had the opportunity, and studying with Rebecca, to drop into all of the remote teachers' classrooms to see how the technology was working in the classrooms. And I want to take this opportunity to also thank Matt Stone and his crew, Mike and Frank as well, for all the work that they've done to update computers and get the laptops into those remote classrooms and ordering, you know, not special mics, but better microphones so that the teachers at home could hear the students clearly. So it was, it was good to see all of our staff in the building, even if they were remotes, to see their, to see the projected on the screen and to see our students in the classrooms. Had a chance to participate with Two Truths and a Lie in Diana Horn's classroom today. I, I got her lie, so I was feeling pretty good. So I know her pretty well, I think. So I thought it went pretty well today. Good just to see our procedures come together. And, but, you know, it is different, you know, I mean, to see the kids with all their masks on, you know, one of the things that I learned from Steve early on is, you know, where I was before hats were not allowed and the hats were allowed in Hockington. And so it always allowed us to start, strike up a conversation. But now it's masks, you know, we have, we have their favorite sports teams or maybe it's the Hawks mask or something along those lines. So, you know, it's going to take a little time, I think, just to get to know the students just because it is a different look. So we're going to get to know students by their masks, not just by seeing their full face. So it is a little different feeling, but I think we're going to, I think we're going to, we're going to be fine. We're going to do well and continue to work on just teaching those, those new behaviors. So, and as, you know, as you heard with Nancy in the, in the statement, and I've talked with Steve about this, you know, the cover issue, the covering of classes is, is an issue. Where Rebecca and I are really working hard and trying to think outside the box and how do we make some things happen, working with Donna Bernadis as well to, to work out the coverage. I'm glad to know that we were able to interview a permanent sub today and moving forward with that candidate to the superintendent. I think we have an interview with him, I think maybe Monday, Steve, is what I saw. So we'll work to get that in, that will certainly help a little bit. But it's, it's going to be a struggle. You know, we had, we had one staff member, I did not find out until yesterday, that had gone out of New England to help a family member move into an apartment. So that caught us by surprise. And so, you know, we're going to start, you know, with that teacher also teaching remotely, but trying to work out the coverage there. So it's those kind of unanticipated absences that you're just not ready for or able to prepare for that, you know, kind of put us, you know, not in a tailspin, but we, we have to move quick and we have to think quickly on our feet. We have to work with as many people as possible to figure out how we're going to cover those things or those classes in our school. But even though that we were given a few curveballs today, as you heard from Nancy, you know, we had some staff members that also stepped up, you know, and, and said, what can I do to help? So, I mean, you know, I really appreciate, you know, the staff members that were able to fill in in different places and, and did it without, without, just said, yep, whatever you need. And so that really helps my, me out with my anxiety during the day and certainly with Rebecca's. So, you know, you know, I think it just really speaks to that it has to be a, a team effort as much as possible to try and make this all work as best as we can. So we're, we're working hard on that still and working with Steve on how to do that. As you saw today, it's great to see all the rooms renovated and the faculty room being utilized. It's much bigger. So even though we have to socially distance, we can't put more staff in there, but it is done and it's nice. And it kind of gets me excited to see the science labs, you know, go through this process next year. I was upstairs on the fifth floor and some of our ninth grade students were up there and they're like, what happened to the classrooms? And so they were excited that there was a hallway going to an elevator. So never thought I'd hear that before, but that was great to see as well. So our CRTC students, as you may have known, have, they've started this week. So they're kind of like in full mode now and they're in person over there as well. I have a friend of mine that teaches over there, I happened to run into him Tuesday when I was boating, kind of picked his brain a little bit. He said the first day went really well and he saw some of our Hockington kids, so that's nice to hear. And now what we're going to need to start working on is just, you know, planning for how we get materials to our remote students. So we'll have a plan similar to what we, you know, some of the things that we had done in the fall for pickup or delivery. So we will work on that so those students, those remote students can get their textbooks and that sort of stuff. Had a lot of conversations with staff today about, you know, making sure that if we're going to assign textbooks, that they're allowed to just keep them at home since they have to carry their backpacks with them. So the teachers are certainly on board with that, they certainly understand. So that's, you know, that's where we're at. Real, I've been really happy for Jeff Daly, who's, you know, really, really trial under fire right now, working on student schedules and asking my, you know, asking me questions, asking Rebecca questions. You know, he's really hit the ground running and doing a great job, as well as Danielle Mazerve and Beth Stern in the middle school with, you know, just some unexpected schedule things that have come up, which is, which is typical, but, you know, it's still different this year with just how the schedule works right now and trying to make things fit. So again, just a lot of problem solving going on right now with a great team of people. And, you know, looking forward to getting back at it tomorrow with the other half of our seventh grade and ninth grade students and, and looking forward to Monday.
Thanks, Chris, that was great. Any questions for Chris?
I, I had one question. So when, when we're talking about coverage, is there anything that the board can do that, that would help? Is there anything in particular that you're looking for that, that the board would be able to provide either in support or funding or something like that? You know, I know my magic wand still doesn't work, but we can offer some other things. So I just didn't know if there's anything specific that, that we could help with.
But we think, I mean, just real quick, we've interviewed four subs. We've got another one in the pipeline. Donna Bowe is moving those as quick as we can. The policy about a background check, even though it would be tempting to, to move that, we really feel strongly, if you're alone with kids, we have to do the background check, so there is a process. I spoke at Rotary this week and Rotary, after Rotary, we had a couple of people head over to, to put their names in and start the process. So, you know, so we're moving that piece forward as much as we can. I do appreciate that the board did support our sub coordinator position. If you remember, that was in addition due to the circumstance, so the board's already done that. You know, and so, and I think we're just going to have to keep moving and move people through as much as we can on the sub list. And tonight, we have a correction on the permanent sub at the elementary school. Chris will bring a permanent sub at the secondary school, and that's a different approach. We've added two, we've added a position there just for short term, for a couple of months. So I think the board's doing everything, we're squeezing everything we can out of the budget. We understand the personnel piece. Chris and Rebecca know, I'm pretty, still pretty comfortable in high school classes. So I plan on coming over and helping. So it's all hands on deck. Chris and Rebecca and Amy and Bill and all of us, Michelle, we're all hands on deck, Maddie Stone, Mandy. So we're going to just rally and do the best we can and rely on, on the better angels and the grace that this, the teachers and support staff has given us.
Great, thank you. That, that's really helpful to hear. You know, I, I know we've kind of heard one side earlier and it's helpful to hear the solutions that are coming forward as well. So thank you for that, Steve.
Rob?
Yeah, so this is for, I guess, for all three principals and it sort of relates back to Scott and Nancy's initial statement. So in terms of, you know, when we started this, there were lots of task force around COVID and how you guys were going to strategize and what the reopening would look like and whatnot. And I'm just kind of wondering if those task force are still in place in some way, shape or form to handle COVID-related concerns as they're coming up now and processing it back out to the staff and to parents? Like, I, I guess I'm just thinking about the, you know, we have our typical systems, department heads, PLCs, et cetera. Is there like a COVID pandemic this happened today in a way to just sort of channel it? So everybody's on the same page, like?
Rob, I can speak to the district-wide task force. Once the, the task force recommendation went to the board on August 6th, since then, we had a change in path and, and real transparency and honesty. It's been, the work has been so overwhelming. We haven't, I've communicated with different members of the task force about different topics. Like I've checked, you know, I've had subcommittees with nurse and technology about like the screening tool, to develop the screening tool through the task force, we did. But we haven't convened the entire back-to-school task force since the, that job was to recommend to the leadership team who came forward. It is a little bit of a. It is a little bit of a time crunch, just on how you manage the incredible amount of tasks. But, so the district's task force has been communicated with pieces, but not as a group.
Yeah. Maybe I, Chris will chuckle when I say this, but you know, oftentimes I would say, look my, stick my head in there and say, Chris, you got a minute? And he always knew that meant 10 minutes. And I'm sure there's lots of people that do that every day. So I'm just curious if there's a system where if you've got 10 people in the building who have seen some sort of COVID related pandemic related concern, if they've got a person to go to so that you, that only funnels to maybe three people. And then three people are going to see Amy at the end of the day and say, hey, this came up today. I guess that's what I mean by task force instead of 10 different people and, and you guys getting overwhelmed with folks sticking their head in the door saying, you got a minute? I guess that's what I meant.
I guess I could start a little bit on that. A lot of it is, is the trust that you hope you have with your staff. So, you know, they could be truly honest, even if the news is not good. It's, it's hard to hear sometimes, but it, it's important to hear it. Just on, it's COVID related, it's on health related, but it looks like we got approval for some tents. We had to work through the, the fire chief, obviously for safety. You know, that really came out of an outdoor committee that I convened a while back. But frankly, things have been still crazy. They were willing to roll up their sleeves and search for things. We have another kind of a remote learning group, which is helping not just the two remote teachers that we have at Harold Martin, but anticipation of potential all remote. They're still working on that. In fact, they just sent me some recommendations that I have to read sometime today. So, yeah, I, I, I couldn't do it without teachers, you know, who might have a specific interest or expertise. Really putting some time and thought into something and then coming to me with it. I'm not quite sure that's answering your question, but it answers somebody's question anyway. And it's been really helpful to, to grab some of the energy we have from the summer and still carry it into the fall.
Yeah, I, Rob, I would agree with Bill that, you know, our, probably our formal task force hasn't met. And, you know, you gave a really good idea, you know, to be able to identify a point person. I, I just, I really feel like, you know, I really like my staff. And so when I'm always walking around, I really want to hear and see them and talk to them and connect with them. So, you know, I find myself that I'm doing a lot of steps myself, certainly not as many as Chris. Chris, that was a really impressive number. I think I'm like at 12,000 and, and, you know, and I only have one floor in my building, so not five. But I, I think that it is really important that I, I want the teachers to tell me what their concerns are. I, I do think that once the school year starts and my ability to connect with people so easily. You know, right now they're, you know, today we had kids in the building and then before that it was just, it was just me, the staff, the teacher. So it was a lot easier to connect with them. But your suggestion isn't, isn't lost on me. I think it's a really good one to be able to identify. You know, some people that were maybe on that task force. I know that my, my nurse Nicole Masters is, you know, totally working overtime. I call her all the time, text her, ask her questions, because I just don't know the medical part of it. So I know she's getting inundated with questions. So it's a really good point to be able to identify once we get into the swing and the routine. You know, if you have questions, someone that maybe has a little bit more availability, you know, to connect with me during the day or before school or after school. But I, I will say that a lot of what I've been doing right now is walking the building, checking in with each teacher, how are you? Is there anything that you need? Just because this is all, you know, it's all new. You know, I'm, I'm trying to do as much as I can during the day. And then people are letting me know, you know, that, hey, there isn't hand sanitizer here. I, great, you know, I didn't. You can't see everything as the building principal. We try to be everywhere. But you, you don't, you can't see everything. So I've just been really appreciative of the teachers and staff that have said, I know you would want to know this, because I do, right? I genuinely do want to know. I really like when a teacher says, I think there's a problem, but I might have a solution. I really like that. Because, you know, sometimes my capacity right now to problem solve, because it's just been so much. It's, you know, you, we have fatigue, you know, all of us do with, you know, with trying to solve so many problems from different angles that you've never seen before. And as a math teacher, you know, I am really comfortable with, you know, with the problem solving aspect of it. But they're all new and, and novel problems to be facing. So I appreciate the suggestion.
Thanks, Amy.
Yeah, and that's, Rob, I think a few times it was just five minutes. It wasn't 10. And so our, like Amy, our committee has not met formally for a little while now. And this week, all week, as the staff were getting back in the building, it was a lot of walking around. You know, I, I think we're, where I have a, a different, I don't want to say advantage, but we have, you know, we have Hess leadership and union leadership in our building. So, you know, they, they're, you know, quick to find me if there is something that they want to discuss. It's been that way for the last couple of years, I think. And we've, you know, Scott and I have had a few different meetings this week, you know, not planned, but you know, just, you know, can we meet this morning? And, and so I've tried to make myself as available as I can when an issue comes up. But again, walking the building, having those individual conversations, a lot of emails from staff asking, you know, things like, what about gloves? You know, those kinds of things. And then working with Noah, working with Joe. And helping and making sure we're trying to take care of those things. What, you know, walking with Joe today to make sure we get, you know, the, the spray bottles out today. So I mean, just trying to lend a hand wherever I can, either whether it's, you know, from a technology side or working with a staff member about how does the remote learning piece work? And working with Matt Stone on how that works. Or working with Tracy to collect how many lunches we're going to try and serve, you know, on the soft opening. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of that kind of networking piece, I think, for the last two weeks especially. To try and get ready for the opening. And as Amy said, I, I think that's an interesting idea to think about just a, a different committee. You know, once the ball gets rolling here next week and, and, and finding time to meet with those staff members, you know, that represent middle school and high school, because we have the two different schools in one building. What some of those things that are coming up as we get further into it that need to be addressed or talked about or resolved.
Yeah. That's, it's a lot like triage, right? But thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Chris? I had a quick, I had a quick question and it might have been fade in and out for me because of my internet connection. And I apologize if you're repeating yourself. And I first want to wish you also a successful school year. You and Rebecca. My question is, is are you guys still working on mechanized teaching still? Or is that something that's still going to be looked at down a couple of weeks from now? Or what, what's the update on that that this board had discussed with you about that?
So the, you know, we're, we're actually, you know, if you think about it, we're kind of dipping our toe in it with the remote students at home now. So we have some classes that have a range, you know, like Kate Centros, I think we were talking with her. She has six seniors in one of her classes that are remote. But we have some classes only have one. So we're kind of dipping our toe in that and seeing how that works. I think what we're going to find with, you know, one, one of the things I realized with just working with the seven teachers who are going to be working remotely from home and, and having the right technology, like something like that's, that, that, the microphone, the right microphone, so everybody can be heard. So the math department, I spoke to one member, it was Jim Bazzard. I spoke to him about some of his thoughts about trying to pilot it with a whole class and thinking about, you know, what worked, what didn't work there. So we can identify some of the other things that we need to address from the technology side of things. And, and, and try to make that come to fruition for every class. So I think what the plan for me, in the back of my mind, I haven't discussed this with Mel Forney, the department chair, or the math department would be, you know, to pilot it with the math team and those math teachers, learn from them and see how it goes. And make the necessary changes that, that we feel we need to make in order to successfully roll that out. I think, as I said to you early on, you know, one of the concerns I had was the loss of instructional time. You know, with, with any one of the models we had talked about outside of a full remote model. And if we can increase that instructional time, I'd like to increase that. I had several emails back and forth with, with a teacher who teaches an AP class. You know, and they, and they're concerned about, you know, the AP curriculum and being able to teach enough of that curriculum in the model that we're doing now. And I share that concern with him. And if we can get to that synchronous model, I think, you know, that will help to alleviate some of that, but it won't be perfect. You know, because it is a, you know, it's just a different approach when you're at home and there's people in person that a teacher has to work both with, because it is a different mode. So there's going to be a learning curve there, I think, for the teachers and how does that happen? How do we manage that? And I think, you know, going to Kate Centros, as, you know, I was alluding to Rob, you know, when you go to Kate Centros and say, how's it going? You know, like she mentioned today in the hallway, you know, that it's just, it's a different feel. And it's, it's just a different type of management and, and it's not easy when you first start it. Will it get better? I would hope so as we get better and, and practicing, like you practice anything, we, we hope to get better at it. Some teachers are trying to be creative. I talked to Pam Moskell today. She had a different computer screen I noticed in the front of her room. And she's trying to work with the tech department so she can just still utilize her laptop. And with just the different computer screens, see the students that are going to be working from home. So, you know, we're, we're kind of in that mode of how do we make it work now? From the teachers, you know, wanting to try and make it work. And so I, what I said to Jim in, in full transparency, I said, Jim, I just got to, let me just get school started and then let me come back to it. So I, let me get school started and, and once we're fully submerged in this model and we, we have our students back on that day one, day two rotation. Then I look forward to going back and having those discussions and, and moving some things forward.
Can I jump in real fast?
Sure.
Andrea, this may be where your question earlier kind of comes into play. Because I, I've been living by this schedule for a while. And this is actually where I'm going to get really nervous. Because we, we don't have the staff. We, I, we definitely want to go synchronous. I love the conversations we've been having with staff about how to make it happen. But the way that we're utilizing people now to help with on their, like, we have a lot of one-on-one IAs who are working on their students' off days, part of the day to help with the remote facilitation. We'll lose them when we go full synchronous. They'll go back to being one-on-ones every single day in the classes with their students. And we won't have the remote classroom coverage that we're going to need. So I, I just, it's a, it is a big caveat to throw out there. But, but as we move this plan forward, which is a good plan to move forward, that's where we're going to need some significant help, because we've, we've got to cover the remote classes too.
Yeah, that's really helpful, Rebecca. Thank you for, for sharing that. I think that, no, don't be, don't be nervous. Well, you can, you can feel however you want. However, um, I just think it's helpful for us to hear and, and for us to know as many specifics as possible as far as, and, and not just the board, but for the community to understand the, like, real in-person actual needs that we have. And it, it, it sounds to me like it goes beyond a volunteer position. If someone is expected to be in the school, you know, Monday through Friday. And if they're not there, you know, that class can't run synchronously, because the kids don't have support or oversight. So I think that's really helpful. And I hope, you know, as, as you guys move forward, because I really, I do love synchronous model. Just knowing any of those specifics as soon as we can and not just, again, not just the board, but Steve or whomever needs to be told so that we can move forward. I think that we're really in support of doing all we can to help make that a reality without cloning people.
And I don't, I'm not advocating for what I'm about to say. Just want to kind of clear the table and just really have answer, the question answered. One thing, you know, whenever I get a tough question, I just toss it over to Steve, because I just simply don't want to say the wrong thing, or I just don't know the answer. I mean, that's just simply how it is. And the question that I, I keep getting asked is how come we're not going back to fall? And I guess the answer is, you know, Steve, I, I want you to be able to address it correctly, because from what I've been hearing from this, from tonight has been, you know, we don't have the space, we don't have the, you know, the, the staff to do it per se. Is that the correct answer that we would tell someone when they ask that who would not come to these meetings?
So the, it all depends and we, and this goes, connects to the MOA and it connects to the, you know, the work that we've done. The board adopted the, the six foot social distancing piece. And if you adopt the six foot social distancing piece, we have maximum capacity in our classrooms. And maximum capacity at a six foot separation is not 100% of our students. I mean, it is fundamentally that piece and that we talked about this in the task force, we talked about this together. That, you know, six feet can become three feet, three feet becomes close in the math. So that's, it would, it would require a reassessment of our safety and, and actually would require renegotiation of our MOA and, and negotiation of what we believe is safe for kids. And, and that doesn't mean it can't happen, but I think we wanted to see opening of school for extended period of time. Take a look at decision matrix and see where we're at. There might become a time where it makes perfect sense to relook at our six foot piece based on where we are. You know, the decision-making matrix is coming up, you know, I monitor it almost daily on where we're at. And, and we did say that if we had a significant, significant time at, you know, the green level, that we would take a look at our, and, and we did, and be full transparency, we left the caveat open to renegotiate the MOA with both our associations. We can come back and do it. But currently, based on our regulations that we've adopted in our agreement, we said six feet, six feet is not 100% in. I mean, is that, I mean, I don't want to be tried about it, but, but that's.
No, I just, I just make sure I'm, I'm sharing the right information with who they're asked. I mean, we have to apply to, you know, accommodations, you know, I, you know, I respect that, you know, what we're trying to do. But no, that, that made complete sense. And, you know, I want everyone to be safe. But I just want to make sure I have the right answer out there for the community that keeps asking it. How come we're not going in and when we're going to go and fall in? I think the path that we're doing right now is appropriate and safe.
Any other questions? And so I don't, Mandy, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know if you had, you want to provide an update or observations of how things are going with student services? Just make sure that you had the opportunity.
Are you muted?
Nope.
I think we heard you there.
Sorry.
Nope, perfect.
I think just like in every other aspect of going back to school, there's lots of questions. And as we answer those questions, another one comes up and, and it's just the nature of what happens. And, and we, and just like everybody else, we work through them as they come up. You know, the staff is really working hard, case managers are really working hard to make sure we address compensatory education per the governor's executive order back in May. Really working hard to make sure we answer that question, but at the same time, let our focus be on what do kids need right now? What do they need right now? How do we educate them right now? And making sure that we continue to provide them with great education while still maintaining that safety that we're all looking for.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just, just wanted to say, Mandy and I, I think we probably had the first time to work very closely together and, and through a, a meeting with the family today. And I just appreciated her approach and understanding and empathy during a, a, just a, a significant meeting with a family. And so I just, I just really enjoyed learning from her and, and being together with her as we navigate a very serious issue with the family. It was just nice.
Thank you. All right. So no questions. So Steve, you, you, you mentioned the matrix and that's next up, so.
Sure. And I, I can share that. I think I'll, I hope I can put up and share the screen. And again, appreciation to the community members who have updated. Do you see it?
No.
Yes, sir.
Oh, great.
Scouting faces.
Okay, so this is where we're at. And we did change this a week ago. And I have put up, I'll put up the word version with live links so people can take, so we're looking at Merrimack County based on daily briefing from DHHS. That's our primary reporting now. That's New Hampshire data. Every day it comes out on how many active cases. We are currently at one point, 1.4, there it is, I'm sorry. If it's based on, and that was based on yesterday. So it was based on the data from yesterday. We're at 1.4, which puts us at yellow. So that's where we are. And so these would be the instructions if we have one or employee or in multiple buildings, things like that. So Norm, this is the decision-making matrix that we're looking at. And we did say we'd look at status, we'd discuss moving more inclusive program based on community spread over time, multiple weeks. So, and I just really appreciate the support from the community to keep these updated and to, to make this as user-friendly and just knowledgeable or as much information as we can. So that's where we are right now, based on yesterday, 1.4.
All right. Thanks, Steve. So no, so no change, no change in decision-making matrix needed at this time. And so then last, under, on the back-to-school planning is an update on, on interscholastic sports.
Sure. Just to follow up, the board charged me a little bit. The question is, how are we going to handle competition? And what if another school? We just, how is another school going to handle our practice of, in our language, and is to strive for 100%, build mask tolerance, to strive for 100% usage of masks. And understanding that for some students it won't work sensory, it won't work for asthma, it won't work for breathing, but to strive and looking for a good faith effort by the schools that we're working with to a good faith effort just to, just to try and do the best they can with the mask wearing. So I, one thing is great, Dan has been doing this a while. I've been doing this a little while. Is great relationships with my colleagues. So I started the, the path with, I talked to the superintendents in our cohort. So our cohort is Merrimack Valley, Pembroke, John Stark, Hillsborough, Dering and Bo. And so I, I spoke today with two superintendents. One superintendent would absolutely support our desire to the best of their ability. They understood what we're doing. I did talk about that our masks are protecting them and the reciprocity of that. Understood and would do everything they can to support our, our desires. Another district said, yep, we're all set. When we understand what we're playing, Hoptington will be wearing face coverings. I have, Hillsborough is in our cohort. They have adopted master in competition as well. So that's three out of the five. I have left a message with athletic director and Dan has done, I think Dan's done some pre-work. Probably saying, hey, watch out, my superintendent is going to call. But, uh, so I think, I think that's going pretty well. The tone is we're looking for good faith efforts to do that. And so I, I, I think we will be able to put together a schedule. There's other works and, and Dan has requested a meeting with Chris and myself every week just to follow through and work together. So I think we're starting that tomorrow at eight. But I think early indications are that the, the policy and intent of the Hoptington School District School Board will be supported as we go into competition. And I'll keep you posted.
Steve, thanks to you and Dan for doing that work. That's, that's a great report and that's really good to hear. So thank you for the, thank you for the follow-through and for doing all that. I know it's, it's another, it's another thing to do, but I really do appreciate your work on that and Dan's work on that. That's, that's great. Any other thoughts or questions for Steve on, on, on sports? All right. So we'll move on, still on, under items for board discussion, but we'll move on to school board operations. And so the, the two items here are in-person meetings and board schedule. And so I do know that two meetings ago, the last meeting that I attended, we talked about the in-person meetings and earlier on, we had said, you know, trying to, trying to line up September for us to get back to in-person meetings and at that meeting. Because of everything else going on and the, the immediate tasks of, of the need for our IT, I think we decided that we're going to slow down a little bit and allow IT to do their core responsibility rather than trying to set up school board, school board meetings. But I, I don't remember where, what date we left that on. And so maybe Steve, I don't know if there's an update there.
So thank you. And I appreciate this conversation. So it's getting, we had said, we looked at the 17th and we get to decide when we get to board schedule, if we're going to have a 17th, because now there's a special meeting on the 16th. And so, but we had talked about after the opening of school, trying to get back to it. And, and as I wrote in board notes, you know, like right now, we have 81 attendees. And we're averaging, right, that's our-ish area. I'm not sure that we have an in-person location with social distancing requirements. I think the auditorium at the high school would be difficult to host 81. I don't know what our, I don't know if Chris determined the max, but you know, by six feet apart. So if, if that interest is going to move with us from Zoom into in-person, how we, what location are we going to handle that? And that's a, that's a factor. And then how are we going to, we certainly had the practice well before the pandemic was to broadcast on YouTube live. So people could see it. And Jim, you and I talked about what other districts have done, comments at SAU, at school points, SAU 66. So I just want to make sure that we stay ahead of it. How, that Matt and his crew and the facility crew. Because having, you know, if, if we take over, for example, the auditorium with 50 people, there's pre-cleaning, there's post-cleaning, there's setup. And then there's also the logistics of how are we going to manage just the comments, the questions. And so just trying to get a little bit ahead of it now that, I mean, we did talk about the 17th. So that was the intent of this item, just to take the temperature, see where we are.
That's really helpful context, Steve. Does anybody have any, any, any board members wish to weigh in? Have any thoughts?
I have thoughts. I, you know, I, I guess I'm of two minds. I, while I love the idea of, of in-person and, you know, today we walked the high school. Right now, I really don't feel like the focus of where I would like staff would be on setting up and managing school board meetings. Especially since Zoom is working. And again, this isn't like a, I don't want to see you in person. I, I think you guys are lovely in person, all masked up and six feet apart. But right now we have a mode that works for a large group of people to engage in this process. And it also does not require as much time from our IT, which we had to restructure as well, you know, so our, our IT department is actually a little smaller than it had been. So I, I guess on the list of things that are important to me, this is lower down on the list. Now, if folks are really gung-ho, I will certainly show up. But personally, that would not necessarily be where I would want us to put resources because they're finite.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That Matt and I had a 10-second walk down the hall. It's not insignificant amount of resources.
I agree with that. This is working effectively. Sure. It would be nice to all be together, but you know, we're, we're getting our business done. There's no reason to tax or create new environments that we have to figure out at this point when there's so much else. Let's continue as we are.
Norm or Rob?
I'm, I'm fine with what they said. The only, the only thing that I would like for the board to consider is, Jim, we had talked about possibly having some type of retreat. You know, once we got this budget done, being able to sit down at the board and be able to talk about our goals, our plans as a board, now that we've passed this budget. How do we do that? You know, I mean, we did it before at the library when my first year and your second year. And it was, I thought it was a great way to be able to just talk. And of course, it's something that's positive for the community, you know, that we're going to be there and stuff, but no one showed up. You know, it's kind of how it always has been with in-person meetings. Last year was just pretty much Andrea. But this is great. Our community is engaged and we're able to communicate the day-to-day operations, what's going on with the district concern. We don't know what's going to happen and when this is going to end. And there's people who need to feel safe. I do, I would ask the board to consider some type of retreat. We're able to have that dialogue of goals that we discussed a couple months ago, that we're able to slow down and have a discussion.
Yeah, Norm, thanks for bringing that up. I, and so actually Andrea and I had a conversation about the retreat and I'm going to forget when it was. It was probably in June, early July. And we actually had some dates in mind that we were going to float. And then and then I guess pandemic life continued to happen. And so then I, I've, I've thought about it again to circulate. But we've set up, you know, we're having meetings every week and then we set up an additional meeting for next, the 16th to start talking about the superintendent search. And so I, I guess I haven't found a, a time where we're that we have weeks that I think we could find to carve off that time that, that isn't sort of I'm stumbling over my words, other than to say that it's been challenging to find that time with the amount of work going on. And I, I agree with you. Because we did talk about it and I think we're all in agreement that we, that we want to carve off that time to spend. You know, there's some somewhat unstructured time together to kind of think through, you know, where we are and where we want to go. And so I, I guess as we enter the fall, I, I do think if we can get ourselves maybe back onto a little bit of a, of a more normal schedule, that that could free up some, some space for us, for us to work, to do that. And so so it's still on the list. And I guess I would just, you know, maybe, maybe let's be a little patient and hopefully try to get something in October. I, I, I just worried that I mean, we're all going to burn out as well. And so I just want to make sure that we're pacing ourselves. And it's not that it's unimportant at all. I, I just think it's, it's, it's hard to see more scheduled time. But we're going to have to make the room. So I appreciate your comments. And then Rob, anything on the?
Yeah, sure. Just a couple of quick things. I, I think, you know, when we first started meeting on Zoom, it was predominantly because of health concerns. And when we started talking about meeting in person again, it was, you know, we didn't want to be hypocritical and say the schools are open, it's safe to come in, but we're going to still not come in. So I think there is that piece of the puzzle. But I do think on the flip side, the Zoom meeting has sort of changed the universe. And what I've been pondering the last couple of weeks is, is this the new normal? I don't think we're going to have 82 people show up at a school board meeting. I don't think that's a reality. I think that people are more engaged now because they can do it from the comfort of their homes. I also think it takes some pressure off as I, I'm seeing all of you, Kristen is steady and Bill with his little headset and his guitar behind him or whatever that is. You're not having to be out another night, you know? So in a lot of ways, this is more convenient for folks and just takes a little pressure off the job and it's more accessible for the public. So I think that's the broader conversation we should have as a board is is this the new normal of how public meetings should happen? And I, I don't think there's a need to change right now. I think there's, there's a lot on the plate. So I would, I would agree with Andrea that now is not the time and and, you know, we should discuss what that new normal is going to be.
Yeah. And I, I guess my two cents is I, I think I agree with where everybody is. I, I've been thinking about this issue and how to give, how to not shortchange anybody, right? I think as we met, if we started to go in person, and I think you're right, Rob, you know, 82 people are not going to, to come to our meetings. And so, but we do have keep using the term, the number 82. But 82 people we know are interested in what we're talking about and want to be engaged in the conversation. So is, is just streaming it over YouTube? Is that enough? And it may be. I mean, for, for those who are tending to, to, to listen in to our conversation, see what's going on. Our, our mode pre-pandemic of simultaneous stream might be enough. But I, I'm not sure it's going to be enough for everybody because people are probably not going to want to come to our meeting, but they are going to want to provide comment. And so then it's the question, how do we do that in a way that's fair to everybody? Everybody's in the room as well as those that are, that are watching us in some way. And so I, I just hope that when, if and when we do move into, you know, a more in-person environment for our meetings. That to me is sort of how do we, how do we balance that? Because I do think we're getting a lot, well, we're definitely, I don't have to think it, we're getting a lot more interest and a lot more comments. And it's been very beneficial. I don't want to say it's not. And I don't think we want to lose that. So it's sort of, we want to keep that part of the new normal where people are engaged, they feel like they can speak, they're heard. And how to do that without taxing our IT department, I think is sort of the challenge. And I know Steve has brought up, the other districts are doing, you know, emails, people can email comments to the board. But that also has a lot of challenges associated with it because one, someone has to read all those comments. And then two, they're not really in real time because someone had to email that ahead of time. And so it, it just feels a little clunky. But anyway, I think that was a long, a long way of saying I agree with Andrea. But at some point, I do think we're going to have to, at, at some point, things hopefully will, will go, will calm down and that we can have this discussion with, with Steve and, and Matt. The how, how can we, what kind of support can we see without being too taxing? In order, in order to accomplish sort of these goals that I think we're, we're seeing, which is, you know, keeping people engaged, having people be able to reach out. So we're not losing that piece. So I guess, Steve, it sounds like for now, we'll kind of continue with this as our, as our as our meeting source. And then, you know, maybe probably keep checking in from time to time to see, you know, if, if that's changing or if IT has, has, you know, has some creative solutions they could help us with. Does that work for now?
Yeah, that's, that's the direction I'm looking for. Thank you. We'll, we'll keep revisiting to see where we're at. But at the moment, we'll stay with this mode and relieve the pressure off the staff and off the facility. So that works.
And then on the board schedule piece, was that, was that a continuation of whether Thursday's work or is that something different?
That was more just, so tomorrow we've got a noon tour at Harold Martin. And then on, I think, I think I put in board notes, Tuesday, maybe we've got a, a tour of Maple. Then the 16th, 16th is the meeting with the search firm. And then 17th would be our, just our regular weekly Hoptown School Board meeting. So just wanted to just get our sense of, of, of that schedule or rhythm for next week. We posted, I haven't sent the Zoom link, but I posted the, a meeting with the search firm and I posted off, just the tours out of courtesy. You don't really have, I mean, they're not meetings, but so just really about the 17th is, is is, are we going to go back to back 16th, 17th? The 16th, I think is five to seven. Does that sound right?
Yep, that sounds right. On one topic, just with the search firm.
Yep. So I was just trying to get some direction on really the 17th and making, and making sure everything else was all set.
So I love spending time with all my colleagues, but I'm going to look to you guys. This, Steve, do we want to meet on the 17th? I, I assume there's action items that we're going to want to get done on the 17th. That's just not a meeting to meet. But, you know, some of it's, you know, Steve, how much, what's the agenda look like for the 17th?
Right now, I'd say, based on where Chris is at, we'd bring a staffing for permanent sub at the secondary level. At some point, I mean, that would be ours, that would be a regular meeting, depending on the creek rising and Michelle and the financials. That would be the typical time, but obviously there's not much typical going on in our world right now. But we, because we met so often, the agendas get lighter, right? Because, because we, I don't, it's not a two weeks worth of work. It's one week's worth of work. It would be, you know, after the, the high, it would be after a rotation of our schools. If we wanted to check in on progress, on grievance, on MOAs, on status. I'm just throwing stuff out. I yeah, at some point, going back to the, every other meeting might give us a little more time to work on the MOA and grievances and stuff like that.
I guess my question is for Rob. Rob, just kind of playing a week ahead, you know, we're on a bunch of subcommittees. Are you calling a meeting next week?
Steve and I are going to try and set something up for next week for the finance committee. We haven't done that yet. Been a little bit busy this week, but I think we are going to try and get something in there. So I mean, I would, I, I think that if we just have the meeting on Wednesday and you know, Steve, if we had to, if there were action items, maybe we could put that on the tail end of, of Wednesday, if that's possible. I don't know if that's proper or not, but I'm feeling a strong need to have to meet again on Thursday unless we're feeling like there's a strong need to meet.
Yeah.
Don't we want to get the sub based on everything I heard? Don't we want to get the sub hired?
Yeah, we can do that and I, and we can fix it.
We do that.
On Wednesday. And if there's any other big, major topics about, you know, what, what the, you know, what Nancy and Scott are talking about, we can carve out a little bit of time on Wednesday if it's.
I mean, we could meet after the search firm to deal with other topics.
Yeah. So that sounds, I mean, that sounds good to me. And so why don't we, unless there's an objection, so I'll work with Steve and, and probably Seth, because you, you've been in contact with the search firm, just to work on Wednesday to put, you know, to bring forward any of those action items that are going to be needed in order for everybody to move forward. We'll kind of get those, figure out how in the schedule to make that work. But it, it feels like we can get all those done without having to come back on Thursday for, for another meeting. So as long as there's no objection, I'm sure we can work it out. And if anything changes, if big issues come up that we have to, we have to devote more significant time, we'll just have to meet on Thursday.
Rob, that opens up a three to four finance committee, if you wanted to, on Thursday.
On Thursday?
We can just talk, you and I can check in tomorrow, Monday. I've got, I've got the marching orders. Right now, Thursday is not a full board meeting. It could be a finance. And we're going to plan to add in a half hour or so on the Wednesday agenda to knock out some action. It could be a finance and we're going to plan to add in a half hour or so on the Wednesday agenda to knock out some action.
I see nodding heads, so that's great.
And if it's all right with you, I apologize to my colleagues. I had said that after their presentation, I would demote them. So I let them down. I apologize.
I think they enjoyed this.
See them, but I'm going to, if it's with, with permission of the board chair, I'm going to allow them to continue to work on logistics and handbooks and.
I hope they go get some dinner.
Good luck, all of you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Bill hasn't lost power, which I don't think he has. If I demoted one too many.
I think, I think we're all still here. All right. So next item is a budget committee update. And Mr. Gupel, thank you for, thank you for being at the budget committee the other night.
Thanks, Mr. Brian. It was a, it was a great meeting. It was great to see everyone and we had a great discussion about a couple of things. Just run through a couple of things just to inform the board. We didn't have any financials because we just passed our budget. So they got more or less just an update about what, what we've been doing, you know, with the superintendent search. Big ticket, one of the big things we discussed was fire suppression. I think it was important to share with them the information that I provided to you guys today regarding the cost behind that. So they had an idea that, that was something that we approved as our first all adult. And they were very happy with that. So I was pleased to see the reaction from the budget committee regarding that. They have a couple of questions that Steve and I can answer that I would forward to them in a pack, in a packet, along with the materials that, for the fire suppression, so they have it with their minutes. They were very pleased with the presentation from the finance committee regarding the $641,000 question that was asked over and over again. They, they, they thought this board is doing a better job of communicating with the community and answering questions. And they look forward to seeing more of that. So that was great to hear. One of the, one of the discussions towards the end of the meeting was the budget and process. I had mentioned to them, how is a way of us being able to communicate this, this budget and process at a starting point? And one of that was possibly having a discussion with the select board to kind of see where they are, you know, moving forward with any specific goals or anything with the tax rate. And it was mixed feelings with the, with the budget committee. I think a lot of them liked the idea of us being able to start earlier in the budget process and kind of get a feel for what we're going, what we're going to do. A few members have mentioned, you know, going through the budget committee as guidance, maybe for some pointers, would be helpful for the boards was suggested. One had mentioned, if you recall last year, Jim, there was a motion for a specific amount on the budget increase. I had said to them, I was not seeking anything like that. As one board member here, I had said that I wanted to give this board an opportunity to create its own budget. We have not done that. And I think they were open to that with that opportunity. Again, I had said I'm only one board member making that, that suggestion that we wanted to have an opportunity to build, to build this budget and have an ongoing process. One of the results of that discussion, Jim, was for us, for our next budget committee meeting, was to bring a presentation of big tickets to the budget committee. So in this situation, the big ticket that they were talking about would be our bond. So our, we know our bond moving forward is going to be 80 cents from the tax dollars, tax dollar moving forward. That's something that, you know, we can explain to them pretty easily. The other one, which I don't have a lot of expertise for the district, is our CIP. They kind of want to get an overview on that, see where, where, where we are with it and kind of have some type of presentation. They are welcoming Andrew or you to come to discuss it since you guys are on that committee, which I'm very comfortable with whatever you deem is appropriate for the board. You guys have specifically been working on that as a team for, for the school district with Steve. And they would like to see some type of presentation regarding our big ticket items, just to kind of get an overview of what is planned out for the next couple of years. So we're all clear and we understand what's going on. So that was the first step, you know, of us starting the budget process to kind of see what is locked in as a fixed, unbearable thing that we're moving forward with. And then I guess the next question would be, you know, this wasn't mentioned last night is, when are we going to have a discussion of our expectations for the budget and process?
So Norm, that would be an October meeting? Is that, is that when they're thinking of, okay?
Yeah, it'd be the second. Yeah, second, it'd be the second Wednesday. I hate adding more work to you guys, but um, you know, we're just trying to blend this together. Ken will be bringing something to the, to the meeting also because, you know, the town has their own CIP, as you know, Jim. So basically the two boards merging as one with the budget committee, being able to share information together. And I really felt that this is a good place to start. I know we talk about budget, we get, you know, but we're at a point where we have to start thinking about it, you know? And I want to be able to do this, an ongoing process with communication with the community and with the budget committee. Rob, I think at some point we are going to have to speed up maybe the process of the recommendation, how we're going to be doing the budget process from the finance committee to this board. We had talked a little bit about Hudson's reports and all that stuff. So I'm happy to work with you on that in order to find something suitable to present to this board because I don't know what the lead time or what the financial verification is to have the switch over potentially or whatever Michelle can recommend to us that maybe is applicable to the budget and process that this committee has been asking for.
And to your, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rob.
Norm, you and I should probably chat before our finance committee. I've got a few thoughts on how to proceed and we can, I put that on the agenda for Thursday.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And then, and maybe you guys, maybe I can pass the buck on to you guys on this one too. Because I, I do, I do think that, you know, sooner than later, and this is, part of this is a question for, for Steve, I think, for when he, I know we just got done a budget process, but you know, when is he going to start, you know, looking at the next fiscal budget? Because I do think something we talked about is, is putting forward, putting out, you know, I don't want to call them expectations, it's more of a guardrails, like, you know, where are we looking for a presentation to come back to us? And so I do think that having, like, having that discussion both probably first with the finance committee and then coming to the board to help, to give Steve so that again, he has some guidelines as he's developing the budget. But Steve, what's your timeline for when you, you start sort of pulling that together?
Yeah, Michelle will open it for department heads in October.
Okay.
Right, Michelle, it goes in October?
Yeah, I mean, one thing is we just barely got our budget. So making sure that the individuals that do have access to the financial system get the proper reports. Because once we start a new year, it, you kind of can't run those reports anymore. And so actually I had it in my calendar like a week ago to, to open up the calendar and do it. But I postponed it because of us just getting it and giving a little bit more time because of those department heads and office managers and principals also busy with other more, not that it's, right now it's more important to be focusing on what they have to do. And that to me wasn't a priority right this minute, but very, very soon.
And the rhythm is September, you open school. October, you start the budget around Halloween. Michelle and I meet with each, each school, bring it to leadership first week in November. Leadership through Thanksgiving, superintendent budgets presented for the first week in December. Last two years, budget's been adopted first week in January. Most of our years, it's the last week of, last school week of December. January's budget committee, February's communities, March is town. So that's been the rhythm. You know, we did talk briefly at a finance committee about that calendar in that if there is direction coming from the board, it really needs to be, you know, early October because we don't, if, if, if our direction is to the department's flat, then they're going to start building in October. If our direction is, you know, CPI, you know, you know, 1.1, or, you know, we can look that up, that would be in October. Typically just that direction is, is, doesn't, they don't work on personnel. Personnel is like a Michelle and me thing. They work on the widgets and the books and the supplies.
So that, that's, that's really helpful. So I'm, I'm just looking at the calendar, just to give us some, some perspective. So if we, if we don't, we're not going to squeeze that, that conversation into our meeting on the 16th. And so, so that would put us to a meeting on, and I, I just, I'm so off schedule, I don't remember, Steve. We, the 24th, which would be the following week, that, that would not be a regular board meeting, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right, it would be October 1st.
So, yeah, so we, we would, we could meet on the 24th, but you know, if we made, if we met on October 1st, that would be the meeting to put on the agenda to have this conversation around, you know, as, as, as we, as Steve and his team start to develop the budget, what are some guidance that we want to give them? And it doesn't have, I mean, it doesn't have to be numerical guidance. And we can come up with whatever guidance we want to give them. But I think if we, if we, if we came together on the first, maybe with some input from the finance committee on your meeting and came in on the first and, and had, you know, a pretty good discussion on, on, you know, where we all are and what kind of guidance we'd want to give Steve and his leadership team as they develop the budget. That feels like that would give Steve you enough time and Michelle, you know, to begin the process and give you enough head time to kind of think through what that, what that kind of guidance means to you. Does that, does that make sense, at least in terms of like a calendar?
The only, the only thing I would say is Mr. NATO is pretty one hour man on, on the finance committee. And I'm thinking, Rob, we might have to squeeze one more in, I think, in order to have this discussion. If we're going to make a recommendation to the board or some suggestions. Because on the agenda for next week, we've got quite a bit to discuss. So of it, I think state grants and some other stuff. And I also asked Steve to unpack a little bit about the return, the fund, the food, the health insurance that was returned to us, $150,000, just a brief explanation on that. I'm not trying to add more work for us, I know we're very busy, but we might have to bridge another meeting in there to have a discussion potentially. So we have our ducks in a row to come to the October 1st meeting. What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, again, why don't you and I talk and even I'll set up the agenda. You know, we might have to run that meeting for an hour and 15 minutes, but.
You're right on the.
Some of the budget drivers, like, if you look historically, the budget drivers are health insurance, special education, cost, teacher retirement. And so this is an actual year for the teacher retirement. So we've got early indications of what the requirement from the NHS is, is an increase. We do have, you know, we have more knowledge now where we are in special ed for FY '22 than we did a month ago. So I have some early indications that we can talk about what the special education drivers are going to be. Health insurance, you know, Michelle and I really haven't dug in on it. What is the, you know, what is the impact on when you get a return of surplus? Is there any connection like the subsequent year? Does that mean they're pretty strong or, or no connection at all? We have had a return of premium before. Obviously, health insurance is a wild card just because of COVID. We, you know, there was certainly some postponement of right procedures and things like that during the COVID time. So we know more about special ed budget drivers. I've got Mandy and I've, and Michelle start early indications there. We do have a number for, for retirement system, health insurance is it, and then staffing, enrollment. You know, staffing is, can be a budget driver right now. Yeah, it's difficult to say, but I, I don't suspect we're going to get a lot of requests for new staff.
Well, the other thing is that we'll have two, sorry, we'll just have two union contracts. So that really all we're going to have in the budget for an increase on staff is the Teamsters and whatever, if there is anything for the non-union, because the other two very large groups will be a separate warrant article.
That's right. And, and I think, you know, when, when I think we're talking about guidance, that's not to say, there's no ways to say in October 1st, we're going to give a decision on, on, on what a budget will look like. I think it's, it's really just guidance and that's how, at least that's how I see it. I mean, we, we're providing some guidance or some, some hopefully helpful, helpful guidance. That would be the best kind of guidance to provide as you go forward, thinking about the budget. But I don't want it, I don't want to put it forward as this is sort of like a decision-making on October 1st, that, that would be very premature, but really it's just guidance. And so I guess, Steve, at the hearing, you just lay all that out is, I mean, is it better for us to move it back a little bit? Because that, that's a lot of information for you to put together in just a couple of weeks with everything else going on. And so again, I'm not trying to slow down any boats, but I, I don't also want to do something on October 1st if we're, if we're, if there's still more to do in order to get some of that info to the table.
You know, I think, I, I think the structure was to lay the foundation for all this information to finance committee. The finance committee makes a recommendation. So I think it's, it's probably, you know, Rob and, and Norm can talk and then we can talk. It's probably two finance committees though, probably is, you know, in, in the next couple of weeks. But Michelle brings up a good point, Jim, the, I didn't really think about it because we've been so focused on getting the schools going. But it's basically it's September 14th, right? Monday, September 14th. We haven't done anything on CBA-esque negotiations. And the, the timeline for ending negotiations, it had by statute, it has to be presented where, where budget committee, town, and the budget committee has to weigh in. And so that, I mean, that's the extent we've always, Michelle and I have always liked these wrapped up before Christmas. Yeah, but before, sorry, the winter break, I don't, but you know what I'm saying? The, you know, and we haven't met that, but we've been close. We've been within a week or two right after that holiday break. And certainly I don't think we've stretched it. So I'm just starting to think about negotiating two contracts, doing a budget process, return to school, MOU, MOAs, grievances, it's, it's preparing for direction for the budget process. It's, it's getting up there.
Yeah.
It would seem like, you know, the CBAs, a lot, a large portion of that work has been done, right? So maybe that process will be a little bit tighter because, yeah, you know, so.
Yeah.
Light of optimism out there, right?
I like that.
We did it in 401, Steve, remember that?
Yeah. Yeah, I do.
So I, I guess in some ways I, I don't want to kick the can to Rob and to Norm. But I do agree with Steve that some of this is going to, you know, you guys, you guys are tasked and are doing a great job of sort of digging in a bit more. And so, I, I mean, October 1st isn't necessarily a date that's, that's carved and sown where we have to have this discussion. So I, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm okay with moving that back a couple of weeks. So that gives you guys more time to meet. It doesn't create, you know, too much. I guess delays aren't even the word I'm thinking about. It doesn't create so much, you know, pressure to get it all done at once. And it still feels like that'll still fit in. It may not be perfect, but it still feels like that will fit in, okay? With sort of the overall process and it gives us a little space in, in order to figure out, and you guys are digging a little bit more, not have to have an hour and 15 minute meeting, but maybe have a couple of sessions where, you know, you, you don't feel so rushed to get that done. I'll just lay that out. So I, I don't feel, I don't feel compelled that October 1st is, is the date we need to have it by, but we can't, we also can't wait to November 1st.
Right, no. I, I think it was, I think it was a discussion that needed to happen tonight to kind of put on our radar. I think, you know, I like the idea of kind of having an ongoing process with the budget committee, having that relationship, kind of seeing where we are with things. I definitely want to, instead of just bring a final product to them and have them vote on it. I think engaging in a conversation with them, with them is important. It brings me back to the initial start of this conversation. How do we go about the CIP? That's a big ticket item. I think Rob and I could probably handle the part on the big ticket items. I guess one would be the bond, that's pretty, pretty straightforward to level debt, you know, 80 cents on the tax dollar. That becomes delta zero because it's not going to change after a specific time. How do you want to handle the CIP?
Yeah, and I think, you know, as, as we get closer, the Andrew, Andrea or I can go. And we do have a spreadsheet, we, we have been working on it. We probably, before that meeting, we'll probably have to get together as a group again to kind of review and, and see, you know, because the building project changes some of that, you know, some of the fund balance we had changed. It's just to make sure we're all, you know, we have that data. But it's, it's been, Steve and Michelle have done a great job on it. So, you know, presenting, presenting where we're at to the budget committee won't be a huge challenge. There's a lot of that work's done. It's, it's really, but I do think Andrea and I, one of us can make ourselves available.
And don't think I'm passing the buck on to you guys.
Oh, no, not at all.
You guys have really familiar with it, you know?
Yeah. Oh, I don't feel like you're passing the buck at all, so no, not at all. So does it sound like, I guess, we can check in again next week, you know, when when we do check in on the 16th and see how we're doing. If if the first does work, that's great, but if if we need more time, you know, we I I think we can move it to the next meeting and not not really create undue burdens if we don't have to.
I think we can give folks at at least a sense as to what we're thinking on the first, maybe not specifics of, you know, percentages, but at least some of the key concerns that people had after the last budget and yeah, I think that's possible.
All right.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
No, this is good, Norm. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on under Personnel, and so Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure. To be honest, the the first one, I'm embarrassed. The 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 nomination for the permanent sub last week at the elementary schools was the wrong name. I have apologized. Jody Condon is coming forward as a permanent sub, so there's an action item to rescind the previous act. I checked with Neil. Neil is my board, you know, he's my board management consultant, and he said, yes, Steve, you you simply rescind and do the next one immediately following, and you're okay, and it happens in the world, and I appreciate Neil Cass's. That relationship has been great for me personally and professionally, so we're going to rescind, and we're going to nominate the correct person, and I have apologized to Jody, so thank you for your grace as we work through that. So that's the first piece. The second piece is, and I was glad we had a tour and got to see it, and and really, I don't know if you caught it in Board Notes, but because of the way the the board budget that passed, this was reinstated, and this was added. We will have kids doing woodshop with a certified woodshop teacher who has enthusiasm, and I don't know if you remember last year during remote learning, he did some great stuff with mountain biking elements and things, so I love Matt, love what he's doing. And this is going to add a fifth. It's 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 just great. So thank you to the board for their advocacy in the budget process and the community for passing it through, so it becomes to realization tonight, and that an additional point two. Everybody okay with those two items? Sorry, I didn't stop and check after the first one. Everybody okay with the correcting of the error? That's a correctable error in the sports world.
Yes, and Steve, don't be too hard on yourself. Mistakes happen, so this is this is an easily correctable one, and we appreciate it. And then I would just say for the wood technology, that was the best smelling room that we were. The smell of the smell of woodshop is awesome, and so I think it's fantastic.
Thank you. I appreciate your grace very much. So the Schedule BP's, so, and this is, so the first item is, and so this goes back to last year, so the Hopkingen School Board has made a decision long before I got here, and not every district does, to issue a personal personals contract to to engage with a stipend. So that's part of the transparency. It's part of, I wouldn't be surprised if Michelle instituted this contractual process before I came to the seat. But we issue, once the board has action, a contract is issued. That is a binding contract. We say after an action item tonight that we will fund this position. And last year, when we went into remote learning, we had positions that were contracted for, but due to circumstances out of their control, right? These this isn't their fault, anybody's fault. And I had some community members ask to be completely transparent about how the district was going to handle this type of work when there wasn't an opportunity to fill that due to a force majeure, which I love saying, by the way. A force majeure, you know, a major force in the world called a pandemic. So it was in, Michelle and I had, you know, we have ticklers, right? We remind each other of ticklers, so during this process, I said, look, next year, before we do this, let's talk with Tom, Tom Berry, our attorney, about a force majeure clause that gives the board, because it's in the contract, the opportunity doesn't have to, it doesn't compel the board, but provides the board, because now we have it on a contract that says, we will do this unless there's a and unless your job, your role is impacted by a pandemic. And then it gives the board the opportunity to adjust this hour based on the time on the pandemic. Again, it's not a compelling piece, but Tom felt, and I consulted with him last year, I gave him, to be honest, I gave him a copy of the contract, and he said, even though they can't fulfill this, and he said, Steve, they're not, it's not that their fault, it is not for cause they can't fulfill. He said, Steve, you need cause not to fulfill a contract. And there was no cause on them, right? I mean, this is if someone does something that's different. But so I asked Tom, and Tom gave us language that would cut would cover us that if the board wanted to revise a compensation based on a revised work schedule or other, you know, to the pandemic, the board would have that flexibility to do. So I felt this is my due diligence, bringing this forward to the board, and it is my recommendation that we add this to the contracts, because it doesn't compel the board to do it, but it gives them the opportunity to, and absent of this, we would be fulfilling that contract unless it was something for cause. Does that make sense?
And Steve, is it consistent with the CBA? I mean, is there an issue there?
So the the board, so the board has the ability to fund it, right? We can fund any problem that we run, and then if we issue the contract, they don't have, they don't have to work under this agreement. So, so if, for example, it's forensics. And look, we're going to issue this contract under these conditions. The conditions are that unless there's a force majeure, it's going to happen, but if it's force majeure, then they can decide, you know what? I'm only doing this if I guarantee it. So yes, Tom felt that adding this clause, and in full transparency, I don't know if I mentioned this to Scott, to be honest with you, Rob. I might have mentioned it in passing. But Tom felt that adding that, because we issue a person, this is a personal contract, it's not this, right, we do a board doesn't action. And it's not that timing, and and I wasn't trying to skirt anything. I was just following up on, I did talk about this with Scott last year during this, by the way, you know what I mean, at the end, at the end of this. But Tom did feel that adding this gives us the opportunity to reduce if we don't run, basically, we're not running the position or running half the position due to COVID. But I'm happy to do more research. The we were doing some things tonight, but the language is under pandemic, to prorate the positions based on the gives the board the authority to prorate the position to, you know, based on the number of weeks you can do, you know what I mean? Like you do 75%, you prorate 75% of it. Tom mentioned week days, but you know, Rob, we do this by weeks. It's not a daily, Schedule B's not a daily. It's just an option.
Right, I guess my concern is that the CBA specifically states what all of those contracts are by years, and that's agreed to then, so are we not changing the collective bargaining agreement by saying, well, this is it, but now we also want to insert this clause? Do they not have to agree with that for us to be compliant?
Good question, and I'm happy to, I didn't do our labor attorney, I did our contract attorney. And we do have different attorneys. We're such a big, I'm just kidding, we're not a big deal. And happy to talk with Scott. It was so I don't, there's no other way. If we don't do this, then we are, we are committed full boat, regardless of conditions that affect the position according to our contract attorney. I did, again, I did not reach out to our labor attorney, and I don't think I talked this fall with Scott about it. I think I mentioned last spring, I was trying to figure it out.
Right. I I think we need to do that, because I would hate to, I mean, it makes sense. It's a logical, rational thing, and if you're at the table, you probably would, you know, hopefully see that. I do think we need to clarify that piece.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and if I miss this, I apologize. I appreciate.
And Steve, do you need this? I mean, is this, do you need this voted on time? Is there a time sensitivity to this, or is that something that you could, you know, I guess, do that do that work and then come back at next week of our next meeting?
Yeah, I think we can. So what we've done so far, there are some positions that we've offered that can be completed remotely. You know what I mean? So we, I wasn't concerned about positions that would continue regardless of decisions that we make regarding our in-person or remote. So those contracts have been issued without a force majeure, because I know if in a pandemic, we still can have a department chair, a PLC team leader, they will still be working in those roles remotely. It was some of this stuff, like, to be honest, if we go remote, do we need an acting principal? That would be a force majeure clause, because there is no need for an acting principal if we go full remote. And and I think they would understand that that there's there's no work to do if you, I mean, you know, like, you know, remote, you know, I mean, Rob, you were acting principal.
I was.
You'd agree that you probably don't have to do it if you were remote. So that's the type. I was trying to protect the district, and I I hope I'm not, I I don't want to project any tone. I was just, for a position like that, if we issue it without this force majeure clause, we're we're buying it. And according to our contract attorney, and this would protect us, because there is no work to do if you're an acting principal and we go remote.
I wasn't. I think you're, I think you're bringing this forward is 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 very rational and 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 great. Which I totally agree with. If if we can do it without violating any of our other obligations, I I'm totally in favor of it, because it makes makes a lot of sense to me.
I'm happy to reach out to Scott and be respectful, and I hope he didn't, if he's probably still on, I hope he doesn't look at this as disrespectful. I was not intending to disrespect any of the associations in this process. And I'm happy to reach out to our labor attorney. I did not. I just did our contract attorney in full transparency and and reach out to see if this is possible to do, but I did research last year, and our contract attorney said there was no way we could not fulfill that contract without a force majeure.
So unless there's any objection, I guess we can, we can let Steve do that additional due diligence and work and then come back and see if you think you have those, you know, have everything set up again that we can, we can put that forward. Does that does that work for everybody?
That's great. I probably should have been more prepared for this, but so I.
No, this is, this is good. Is there anything on the nomination slate, or are they connected?
No, that's the, so it's this is a third iteration. This is, I think, acting print, I put it, it's in the folder. I think I I just, I think we should probably just have a a language, final, final contract language as a term by the superintendent, so, you know what I mean? We won't issue those contracts until we figure it out. That's all right. Oh, we can.
Can we postpone that, or are there ones on that?
I think some of them want, that's a good question. Yeah, why don't we see if we can get them done next week? That way it's just cleaner. I'll talk to Scott, and that way they know.
Okay.
We'll add them to the 17th in one week. I think I think everybody's pretty busy right now before they have a a peer outreach or as a sophomore class advisor meeting.
That makes sense to me. Okay.
So we'll hold those tables, though. Thank you, and I appreciate this feedback very much.
Um, all right, and so nothing else on Personnel?
That's it.
So we've come to a next, our second public comment period, and so those attendees who are still with us, who have a public comment to give, if you just move your mouse cursor down to the bottom of your screen, there's a raise your hand button. If you press that, it lets us know that you have a public comment, and so I'll open it up. All right, so no hands are raised? Nope, there we go. Catherine Madio. Hi, Catherine.
I I have nothing to say. I just wanted to get you. That's it. You guys have a good night.
I love your humor. Thank you so much.
Location, please, address, please.
Kathy, can you give us your address?
Yeah, we need to know where you.
I think she's gone. No, you're not.
108 Park Ave.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next is Molly Richter. Hi, Molly. Oh, well, there you go.
Sorry, slow on the uptake. Hi, everyone. I just have a quick question, and I really apologize because I had to tune in late, so you may have already addressed this. We were just wondering at our house, if a kid does have a symptom and they have to stay home, are we able to have them log in remotely right from the get-go, like the 25% who are choosing remote, or do we have to wait for synchronous learning to come online?
I'll talk with with all the principals, but our hope is not to lose that kind of instruction, so that we hope we can get them logged in and participate. That's our hope, and but I will verify that with all the principals soon.
Okay, that'd be great to get word on and just know what's going to happen. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Oh, Molly, before you go, I don't know if you're already gone, can you state your address?
Sure, 119 Tyler Road.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thanks. Good night.
All right, I don't see any other hands. And so I am going to close the second public comment period. Thank you all for for sticking with us this long. And so unless there's any other items for the board, I don't see any, so we're going to move on to action items. And so I would ask if there is a motion from the Hopkingen School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to rescind the action item that was that approved, Tina Upton, permanent subposition at the Hopkingen Elementary Schools.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none. Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yeah.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So motion is approved. Is there a motion for the Hopkingen School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve Jody Condon, permanent sub, Hopkingen Elementary Schools? End date to be determined by the superintendent of schools.
Still moved. Welcome, Jody.
Second.
Any discussion?
Welcome.
So Norm?
Welcome. Norm Gupel, the yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So we'll we'll hold off on the next one until our next meeting. And so is there a motion for the Hopkingen School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to grant a revised contract for HHS Unified Arts Teacher Matt Christie, an additional 0.2 FTE?
Still moved.
Second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so next item is I would ask if we could have a non-public under A for Personnel. There's no objection. I would ask if there's a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91A, colon, 3, Roman 2, small a for Personnel.
Go move.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. All right, so Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yes.
Jim O'Brien is a yes. So we'll, we'll, once we adjourn, we'll go into non-public. I can, if if we want to say, if people don't mind, at 8:10, the meeting, non-public, and I'll give me time, it'll give us all time to go grab a bite to eat, and then it'll give me time to get a link and send it out to all you guys for 8:10. Oh, thanks, Norm. That looks delicious. So with that, if there's nothing else, we can adjourn. Michelle, thank you for hanging out with us and for your time. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Good night, everybody.
Have a good night. All right, I'll see everybody in about 10 minutes.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.